It might be, I don't know for sure.
Good?
I haven't either.
Where? Wherever you feel comfortable. You could take this seat if you want to sit down, or you can stay in there, it's up to you. Sure, no problem, no problem.
Do you want me to get out of here?
No, you can take that.
Alright, I will go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission meeting for November 20th, 2018. First on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. Do we have any adjustments or additions? Hearing none, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll proceed accordingly. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the October 16th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any adjustments or comments?
None for me.
I'll move that we adopt the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so tonight on our agenda, we've got a couple discussion items. We'll start first with the public hearing for the draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Is our guest Laura going to walk us through this one? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners. My name is Laura Chamberlain. I am a planner with Hoyzington Cogler Group Incorporated. We have been helping the city of Victoria for the last almost two years on this process, I think, going through the comprehensive plan update. And the end is in sight, so we're looking forward to it this evening.
Before we get started, can I just help out the room? I forgot to do one thing.
Absolutely.
Since this is a public hearing, I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to just let everybody know how this will work tonight. So we'll start, Laura's going to start with an overview and a summary. We'll then have a chance as a planning commission to ask any questions, discuss some items, and then at that point, I'll open up the public hearing. And so when we do that, you're all welcome to share any thoughts, comments, ask any questions that you have. We'll just ask that you step up to the podium, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. We'd love to hear it. But I just want to let you know that, so we'll let Laura get through the presentation, let us have a discussion, then we'll open it up. Then we'll close the public hearing, and as a group, we'll talk about it and talk about what our next steps are, so.
Excuse Mr. Chair, can you kind of give us an overview of what the true purpose of the comp plan is, like the 10,000-foot view?
I'm going to let Laura do that, because I know that she's prepared. Just as an overview, she's going to talk not only about the process, but also what the plan means and how we might use it as a group. So I'll turn it back over to you, Laura.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just a brief look at the presentation I'm going to give this evening prior to the public hearing. Just give a broad overview of what a comprehensive plan is, what the purpose is, and then a refresher on what the city has gone through through this process up to today and what steps are next. Then highlight the key components of the plan, the areas that have changed, especially since the planning commission has seen it, as well as taking into consideration some of the comments that have come from adjacent and affected jurisdictions, which was what we typically call the six-month review. ...to guide land use and development, to maximize efficiency and sustainability of those infrastructure investments, and to make the most efficient and wise use of scarce public resources. As we all know, we would love to have as many public resources as possible, but we need to, we're confined by those elements to make sure that we're growing in a good way. And to promote community investment, to continue to have the high quality of life that is the reason that people choose to live here in the first place. So our comprehensive plan cycle, we are part of the Twin Cities Metropolitan Region in general. There's a 10-year planning cycle that is established every 10 years, starting with the census. Based off of census data, then projections for growth can be established of, okay, what rate are we growing, what land uses need to accommodate that growth? And that is established at a regional level, and then local jurisdictions need to update their comprehensive plan to fit within that regional system. And so, this is, obviously we're coming towards the end of kind of our participation with this cycle, but this is something that is a living document. It is something that will continue to change as demographics change and as your city continues to grow. So this is not ever something that is completely done, as much as all of us would like it to be. And as I mentioned, as part of the Twin Cities Metropolitan Region, we come under the jurisdiction of the 1976 Land Planning Act. And the Metropolitan Council is the overseeing agency of, which oversees regional planning and conformance with the Land Planning Act. This round of comprehensive plans, the Metropolitan Council established their regional goals within a document called Thrive MSP 2040. And the regional systems, such as our transportation systems, our sewer and water, parks, trails, all are based out of that Thrive MSP regional vision and goals. And then, working down at the local level, each municipality, each county, and work on their own comprehensive plans, and need to make sure that we align with the regional's goals as well as our neighbors. So, you know, if we're building trails, we want to make sure that they connect at some point, and that the type of growth that is happening here doesn't negatively impact our neighbors, so. A major element of the comprehensive planning process is looking into the future for what kind of growth we can expect. Our population and households, our employment are expected to grow as the city of Victoria continues to grow. The population rate, I apologize for not having this on here, is between 2017 estimates and 2040 around 68% growth. And, but household growth projections is around 85%. So, not only are we going to add more people, but those people will live in more and more households, so fewer people per household, which shows that not only do we need to accommodate a growing population, but accommodate many different household types as the city continues to grow. And employment is also projected to grow. You can see kind of the outlier on that growth trend was from the 2017 estimates. I believe that was based off of first quarter from 2017 data that might not, is not as consistent with the census data normally is. So I think that's why we have such an outlier in that case. So far with the comprehensive plan process, we began in the spring of 2017. And at the beginning of the process, did a lot of community engagement events and efforts in order to get responses from the community of what type of vision and principles they would like to see moving forward. Last winter and this last spring was a lot of the drafting of the plan. In the spring and, or late spring, early summer, was the beginning, excuse me, the beginning of our review process with the adjacent and affected jurisdictional six-month review, which is just coming to an end right now. And currently, based off of those reviews, and then also further discussion with the steering, the comprehensive plan steering committee, as well as the planning commission refinement of the plan. So the remaining steps, this evening, obviously the public hearing, review by planning commission and city council. Our plan is required to be submitted to the Metropolitan Council by the 31st of December. And then, the Metropolitan Council will do their review and review the plan, do their official review, excuse me, and review the plan for consistency, excuse me, completeness and consistency with their requirements. At the end of that, we'll get an assessment, and typically there might be a few like word changes, hopefully no huge policy changes at that point. And then, the city council would adopt the final comprehensive plan, hopefully in the first or second quarter of next year. Then following that would be the implementation of the plan. And as you can see, throughout this process, we've had a number of different opportunities for community engagement and input. Our largest entity was the steering committee, made up of public officials, community members, business owners, developers, people from the township, as well as from the city, or excuse me, from the growth areas within the township. And they met, I believe, at least 10 times. And then, we also had a number of other opportunities for the general public to engage online and in person with this plan. The key components for the comprehensive plan, we have our vision and guiding principles, which I had mentioned earlier, land use and growth, and a new area that, or not new, but are, an area that we'll be discussing this evening is the Greenway Corridor concept that has, accomplishes a lot of the different guiding principles of the comprehensive plan and impacts land use, but also impacts our water resources, parks, recreation, open space, and natural resources sections. And another important element of our component of the comp plan is our implementation, which it comes in the form of action steps at the end of our plan. Up in front of you is the vision that was established for the city of Victoria for 2040. Not going to read it out loud, but essentially looking to become a high-quality, forward-looking community, poised to continue being balanced and having growth. Guiding principles for the city and for this planning process, preservation of open space and natural resources, coordinated and efficient growth management, focus on quality design and preservation, or excuse me, preserving the sense of community, balancing new growth with preservation of the existing community and neighborhoods, having excellent trails, parks, and recreational opportunities, an efficient multimodal transportation system, economic and fiscal strength, quality of life in neighborhoods and districts, and an accessible, connected community. So the first key, or the next key concept area, our land use and growth. This is our future land use map is in front of you. As you can see, we have the city's existing borders, and then the large growth areas that are bound by our orderly annexation agreement with the city of Lake, or excuse me, Lakeville Township, Lake Town Township, excuse me. And those have been generally, that land area is, goes further than what we can expect to grow between now and 2040. And so, we have designated kind of our west growth area and our south growth area as the directions of growth, based off of our infrastructure and, as well as market trends of where growth is likely to happen. Other key elements to note within our future land use plan, our emphasis on our unique downtown within the city of Victoria, having that be a mixed-use area and its own designated land use. We also are introducing beyond the downtown, key nodes of activity, trying to, or looking at adding some more commercial nodes at key intersections that can serve maybe more of that neighborhood commercial, not necessarily a regional or city level, but have services and commercial retail that serve the immediate areas around it. Part of this planning process as well was to highlight the designation of areas for employment, especially to diversify the tax base. And in the south growth area, kind of the rail line has been used as a demarcation for our flex employment and general commercial areas. And then, as I mentioned before, the Greenway framework, which is not on this map, but I will get to shortly here. So, the Greenway framework is an element that has been introduced through a collaborative partnership with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. And they had set out looking at the western growth area for identifying MCWD priority project areas for water quality and restoration areas. Within that, from those conversations and that work, and aligning that timeline with the comprehensive plan, have brought together this idea of conservation and water quality, also how could that come into our future growth management? And how can we prioritize these areas to keep Victoria, the city of parks and lakes, and while still allowing these areas to be developed in a good way? And so the Greenway framework is to look at existing conditions and see where there are high-quality natural resources, as well as those areas that, from the city's perspective and the watershed's perspective, are key and important to maintain, and then how to connect those in a way that can build more of a network, rather than just individual isolated areas of natural habitat or resources. So the, we have done an assessment of the growth areas around, or within Victoria, and the growth areas around it, and established different elements, our tier one, tier two, and then connective corridor search areas. Tier one are areas that we've highlighted that already have some sort of regulation prohibiting development. Those include our wetlands, open waters, floodways, and certain parts of the floodplain, and hydroic soils, I think that will need to be removed, actually. Tier two, the areas that may have restrictions are more high-quality, based off of their land cover or natural resources. These include buffers around streams and wetlands, natural corridors and existing significant wooded areas, as well as steep slopes. And then, the areas in between all of these different tiers are what we've highlighted as connective corridor search areas. So, from the illustration, you can kind of see how all of these start to work together to form a network, rather than just isolated areas. And the way that this Greenway system would become implemented is obviously with the tier one areas that is through existing development regulations that already exist. Finding the tier two and connective corridors is more of a plethora of opportunities through possibly PUD negotiations, prioritizing different areas, and giving density transfers for those high-priority areas with future development, opening up flexibility within park dedication standards, within a subdivision ordinance, so that it can include some of these natural resource corridors that might not be right for active recreation, but could really fulfill these connecting principles. Obviously, coordination with landowners and developers throughout this entire process. There's also a possibility for conservation easements and programs, grant opportunities, things along those lines, to incentivize those type of agreements. And also, if any land becomes available for these high-quality priority areas that the MCWD or other public entity might consider actually acquiring that land, or some sort of agreement along those lines. The idea being, all of these could add together to build this corridor that is established in one way or another. And it doesn't have to be 150-foot right-of-way the entire way, or anything along those lines. So, that's what this illustration is showing. It can be made up of a lot of different types of pieces. And so this is an image of the Greenway framework as appears in our most recent version of the comprehensive plan. I don't believe that you all have that version yet, so that will be available online. And so, this brings together all of those different layers. There's a lot going on within this map, but we have our tier one and tier two lands, the connective corridor search areas, as well as overlaid with the, we have in yellow outlines here, the conservation and restoration areas identified by MCWD as areas for future projects, pardon me. And then, we also have identified through our parks chapter, park search areas for growth, excuse me, the growth areas of the city, as well as conceptual trail corridors. So, all of those come together and share this common goal with the Greenway framework. And getting into that now, the Parks Recreation, Open Space and Natural Resources chapter, that we have our, as you can see from the Greenway Network, is mirrored within the plans for that chapter. We have what's called the Green Ribbon Framework, which is shown on the left, and then our future search areas for community parks, as well as neighborhood parks, shown on the right. And then the other areas of our comprehensive plan include our transportation and mobility, sanitary sewer, water supply, and surface water management. Finally, the last element of our comprehensive plan is the implementation. And each chapter has within it stated goals and policies, and then actions that support those goals and policies. Those actions address the who, what, where, and how of reaching those goals, and can have multiple sub-actions if necessary. Our implementation chapter brings all those actions together within a table, as well as identifying the priority, being either short-term, midterm, or long-term, and as well as who the responsible party would be to implement. Typically, the city or regional entity, county, or there's a number of different elements within there. So, the comprehensive plan, we had completed a draft in the spring and sent out that draft to adjacent jurisdictions as required through state statute. And from that draft, received responses from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, Mindot, City of Minatrista, City of Carver, City of Waconia, and Dalgrin Township. We also submitted the plan for preliminary review with the Metropolitan Council, so that they could give us an idea of how many of their requirements we were checking off. And all of those comments had been cataloged and organized into two different types, technical, meaning that either minor edits, missing information clarification, or interpretive items, or substantive elements that really needed a different policy direction, changes to the land use map, or changes to our projections. The only substantive change actually came from our continuing work with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and the Greenway Corridor framework that we're presenting this evening. All other comments that we received from the Met Council, as well as from the adjacent and affected jurisdictions, were technical in nature and able to make minor edits. Some of those changes are still happening. We are updating our, a lot of our infrastructure elements, still working with, is it the watershed who we're waiting on? Oh, excuse me. And so, getting those elements finalized, but they don't have an impact on our final policies. policies. One other minor change is that we will be adding a functional classification map for our future road systems. We do have a functional classification map for existing roads, but did not have those different functional classes listed for, excuse me, our future growth areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's lots to discuss. How, how would you like to gather feedback from us? Is it easier to walk, to just sort of shout out various comments in various sections? Or would it be better for us to maybe sort of walk through in the same sequence of the topics that you covered? And that may be a way to organize thoughts?
Sure, however you guys want to approach it.
Does anybody have a strong opinion one way or the other?
Just have a question, just for clarification. So you mentioned that part of the Greenway framework has recently been added and we may not have that updated copy yet. So the latest I have is November 9th. Is it in the November 9th updated comp plan?
No, not the most updated. So the one, the map that I showed you this evening was updated today.
Yeah.
So that will be available, but it is not in the copy you have in front of you.
Yeah, I think in that copy that you've got in front of you, the, there's a third page with a placeholder.
Yeah, there was a blank page, that's what I got.
That's where that map goes.
But the content that he refers to is generally there on the, on the-
Verbiage.
Yes. Correct. A bit more clarifying language has been added within there, especially regarding, I believe, some of the implement, or how it would be implemented. But yes, in general, the concept is the same.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Should we walk through this? Let's go this a try. So, starting with the introductory, introductory comments, you know, it talks about setting the stage, the community context, and the vision and the guiding principles. Anybody have any questions or concerns about sort of those high arching goals and vision that's been set? How about land use with regard to zoning that's proposed and some of the concepts? Anything in particular anybody'd like to discuss?
Nothing in particular. Just, you know, to remember that this is, although it's called a comprehensive plan, it's not really a plan that's set in stone. It's an idea for us to move forward in the future and that there's flexibility built into every comp plan because times change, uses change, needs change. I just, that word "plan" just makes it sound prescriptive. I try to remind my neighbors of that when they come to me. What do you mean they're doing this here? No, this is suggested comprehensive plan that we can build on. It's a guide for us to think about the future. So I like to throw that out there for, when I talk to people, just tell them that's just a general term that we use for that program, so. But other than what's on there, you know, a lot of hard work and forethought goes into that. And I appreciate everyone that served on that committee especially, and staff who's put all this time these last two years into this program. It's hard for me to sit up here as someone who didn't participate 100% in that to sit and even suggest that I know better or could make a change to what's been done so far. So I really appreciate your hard work on that, everybody.
Anybody else want to touch on land use?
One thing I just really like to see is the medium-density land use addition to the south of our city. I think, I think the demographics have been looked at closely, and you can see that in the zoning because that is, that is future growth based on the different household types.
Yeah, it seems like there's an intentional goal to, to balance our growth as a city with regard to housing development, but also recognizing the balanced need for employment and diversifying the tax base and the amenities available throughout the growth areas and Any comments on either economic development or the housing sections? How about Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Natural Resources?
I think it's a good goal to keep what natural element we have here. We have some beautiful property with the lakes and the hills and the topography of the city. I've lived here just about 30 years now, and I've seen it change quite a bit from places where I used to maybe hunt or hike with nothing around. It's really changed a lot, but I think a goal going forward to preserve as much as we can at a minimal cost to the landowners, of course, because that's, it's their property, so they have a right to develop as well as anybody. But if somehow there's the bartering system that was mentioned for green space and natural environmental things that we have here, topography, I think that's a great goal to have and it's something we should really pursue and not just talk about. But like having a great tree preservation ordinance going forward, wording that properly, working on our protection of our waters, of course, because we've seen a couple of lakes fail. We have impaired lakes here that we need to take care of and we need to protect the other ones that we may annex in their next annexation. So I'm kind of conservative when it comes to land preservation, so I look for that in any opportunity I can, so. But I think the statement that it's out there, but to actually go forward and do it is what we need. And that takes the residents too to get involved because they have strong comments on that also. I hear that quite a bit from people that have lived here for a while, that that's an important feature because that's why they love Victoria, because it's beautiful. So I'd like to see that in there.
Maybe I'll, I'll build on that because I feel like there were, in this particular sections with, section with regard to Parks and Open Place, there's two big ideas that I'm seeing carried forward. One is the Greenway Corridor Policy. And Scott, you had mentioned that, but I, I think that that's going to take some real commitment by the city, by many, many players involved. I think it's going to require some adjustment to ordinances and approaches. I think that it's going to rely on a PUD approach to creatively plan. In particular, a big idea of this plan that may represent a shift and a heightened level of commitment in order to sort of implement that over a long period of time. But I think we'll, we'll feel that sooner rather than later. So that was one I thought would be good for us to discuss as a group. I'm curious to hear some reactions to that. And the other is somewhat, could be somewhat related, but it's presented as a slightly different idea, which is the Green Ribbon Concept. And, you know, when you, when you take a look at what it talks about in the plan in terms of thinking the city of lakes and parks, but how do we connect among them and use those resources? And thinking about a green ribbon concept as a way to strengthen connections among amenities and, you know, connect the city, I think continue down that road, but, you know, an explicit commitment to that. It seems like perhaps that could be synonymous with the Greenway Corridor Policy because there's, you know, as you make these connections through the Greenways, it's going to be a natural place to physically connect in terms of trails and bike paths and those types of things. So those two stood out to me in this section. Curious what others think about those things.
I think that the Greenway Framework that's recently been added in, really partnering with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed is fantastic for the city, but also for, I mean, the citizens of the city, the taxpayers of the city. Because it, the scope, it's a large project, and to be able to partner with Minnehaha is just a, I mean, it's one of those situations where it's really win-win for everyone. We get to preserve that, we don't have to pay as much for that, and the end result of that could, could just be one of the shining stars in this city.
I'll, I'll just add to that. It also seems to be complimentary to some of the public feedback that we've, we've been seeing with regard to, you know, what's special about Victoria, how, you know, how do we avoid clear-cutting and continue to develop in one way when, if we can preserve those tree stands, preserve the natural landscape that we have, this seems to, you know, with commitment, support maintaining what makes this place beautiful while still recognizing that there's a balanced approach to development and enabling that to happen, but in a more creative manner, which sort of balances those things.
Well, and also, like you mentioned, the synergy between that and the green ribbon and trails, I know we saw this from the citizen questionnaire that went out. We've all seen it. We have a lot of bike paths that kind of go nowhere, and, you know, with this development and this development, and I don't know why they ended up that way, but, but they have. And for our city, especially with the hub we have downtown and expansion going south, to be able to tie that all together, to be able to hop on a bike and get downtown safely is, you know, I'm sure something that everyone in the city wants. And if we can somehow use those two pieces together, again, that's just, that's just fantastic for the city.
Touching on the safety part, with additional people density, the safety's critical. So those pathways are going to be critical for our kids to get around.
Especially more people, more cars.
So you all segue nicely to the next section, which is Transportation and Mobility. I know we've heard a lot of feedback from the public thus far, just through public comment periods and email with regard to traffic and recognizing increase, you know, there's a trajectory for the community to continue to grow and the amount of, you know, planning that goes into our transportation network in the city. Anybody have any thoughts or comments about that?
We're going to have to develop somehow for, I mean, our business slash retail, whatever you want to call this side of town, downtown, you still have to cross Highway 5 no matter who you are, when it is. We have to somehow partnership with the state or somehow come up with a, a good path tunnel that's centrally located or something, an overpass or something that makes it accessible for, especially if we get people moving further south. They want to come into town and ride their bike into town, they still have to cross Highway 5 or Highway, County Road 11. And if we're adding more traffic and more vehicles to those roads every day, which we are, which, you know, obviously I've seen in 30 years, it's only become tougher and tougher to get across Highway 5. I mean, tonight it took me 10 minutes. I live right, cross Highway 5, two blocks. It took me 10 minutes to cross Highway 5. I just wanted to see how long it took. So how's some kid on his bike or trying to walk across the street if he isn't at the crosswalk at the right time? And even then, it's dangerous because people run that crosswalk. We've got to come up with something a little better than a push-button light that saves a life. So transportation is huge, but only if it's in a safe manner. And we have to throw that element along with controlling the traffic, you know, with sizing of the road, shoulders, whatever, whatever it is. But that'll be a huge thing going forward if we're going to actually grow as slated here, so. And it's just, it's always been a thought of mine to make it a lot safer to get around town on bikes and pedestrian-wise, especially since we know there's limited parking down here. So people are going to find another way to get downtown in the summer especially. So we've got to make that opportunity available.
Does that happen? We're talking about a comp plan and we realize that we have transportation issues. The one big thing would be a four-lane road running right through the middle of the city, right? So how, what's that process for involving state, county? I mean, how does that work? How would that work in to our comp plan? We know it's a great idea to have a four, or a tunnel or whatever, something to ease and talk about safety. How's that process working in relationship to the, in relationship to the plan?
So as far as the comp plan, this would be the time to identify that as obviously an issue that is important to community members, something that the city can either participate and further study, collaborate with those different entities. The comp plan's kind of purpose for something of that magnitude would be more of the identification of it as an issue. And then the, what could possibly happen with that and implementation is more on future study, future more technical elements. And I've heard city engineer could probably speak to that a little bit more as well.
Hello.
Welcome.
You're here, city engineer. So in the background of the comp plan, there's traffic forecasting that's been ongoing both in the county's comprehensive plan that then gets fed into the city's transportation section of the plan. So that baseline starts to get set. But the issues that were specifically talked about tonight, I think it's important to let the Planning Commission and the public know that the county is about to undertake a study in conjunction with the City of Victoria, Chanhassen, Chaska, and Mindott and the Arboretum. It's essentially a little sub-area transportation study that's going to look at improvement of County Road 18, so 82nd Street, the gravel road that runs behind the Arboretum, Highway 5 from 41 all the way to 11 by Dairy Queen, and then also Rolling Acres Road up to 7. So all of those roads really interact together, and we've been trying to figure out how to prioritize improvements with them. With the recent passing of the county's transportation tax, I can finally stand up and say that someday there will be improvements to Highway 5 after 15 years of saying, nope, sorry, there's no money. So the purpose of that plan will be to prioritize and figure out how improvements would happen. We had a question and answer opportunity with the consultants who are considering to propose on the project today. And I certainly carried that message very strongly to the consultant team, that pedestrian crossings, getting across Highway 5, all of the things that I've heard from the Steering Committee along those same lines have been shared with those groups. But that study's expected to take about two years. It'll have extensive public engagement, both with the broader public as well as City Council, Planning Commission, downtown business owners, Rolling Acres Road residents that are really interested in seeing how that would happen. So we'll start to have answers to a lot of those questions sooner than later.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think without having that in the future, the ability to get there, we really limit who's going to move in as a business too. Because if they're going to say, if I'm going to start a business for the kids to come and play, I don't know, video games or whatever kids do nowadays, they stay at home and play video games, I guess. But if there's a destination for the kids, the people are going to say, well, wait a minute, if those kids can't get across Highway 5 safely, I'm not moving downtown Victoria to move that business because it's not going to survive. So we may be limiting ourselves by not having access to downtown and easy access, and of course, parking once again. That's, that's our biggest issue, nine years on this plan, Commissioner Jeff, I think we talk about it every other month, you know, but it is an issue and it's a real one. So that's one, another thing we have to provide along with the ability to get downtown, so that's good to hear, there's going to be some studies.
Yeah. Bob, I appreciate your question because it, it reminded me in, in one way that this affects the plan with regard to Highway 5 and it relates to what you're seeing as well, Todd, is, I remember among the Steering Committee, and this probably came up at some past Planning Commission meetings as well, but, you know, establishing this vision and thinking about, recognizing that Highway 5 could, could expand at some point in the future, is likely to expand at some point in the future when maybe it's a little less clear. But it, it was influencing the discussions around the downtown study, the central business district study, in terms of, you know, how it, how it develops to the, to the west. I remember in Steering Committee meetings, talking about, you know, when we're thinking about the central business district zoning, whether or not it should extend to the south side of Highway 5 or not. And I think there was a lot of discussion at some of the community engagement and public open houses, as well as among Steering Committee and others involved. And I think what we're seeing in the current proposed zoning plan was that there was some consensus to show some central business district on the south side of 5. But we talked about whether access across 5 was going to be prohibitive, you know, whether or not it made sense- across five was gonna be prohibitive, you know, whether or not it made sense to sort of keep all the downtown business district north of five so that it's sort of a, a walkable downtown community as opposed to having people cross Highway five to businesses on both sides. But I think that, um, since we ended up in a place that, uh, guides for business development on the south of five, I think as that happens, we're gonna be faced as a community with how, how that happens. Maybe that's an opportunity from the perspective that you have, um, that you stated, that maybe businesses can thrive on the south side of five because of their ease of access. But on the same, at the same time, we'll have to balance the safety aspects as our, as our downtown district sort of grows with this major, um, major traffic, um, cutting, cutting through that. So those are just some ways that came to mind, thinking about sort of, you know, there is some time, like now is the time to influence some aspects of that in terms of a, a long-term vision. This process can't solve the actual implementation of how, you know, that gets safer or whether, you know, this guy doesn't, isn't telling us whether to put in a, a underpass or overpass or stoplight. But there are some planning ideas that I think are influenced.
I've seen our CBD recently coined as urban. And there's, in my opinion, I don't think it's very urban, but what is urban is the bike paths. That does make it urban. The density makes it urban. Land scarcity makes it urban. So if it's gonna be urban, let's, let's figure out how to create better transportation to it. So our, our downtown is this central business district. And recently I've read something that coins our downtown as urban. Um, as a Victoria resident, I don't necessarily call this urban. Typically urban, you have, um, a lot, a lot of people to, to support many different businesses, all within that business district. So you're living and working. Obviously there's been a lot more added, um, with the, the flats here, um, and some other additional living and there's, you know, future growth that will encompass that too. But, um, yeah. Did I answer your question?
So keep us moving. Um, if there's anything more on, on transportation mobility and, um, we can come back and talk about these things more. But, um, local surface water management, I'm sorry, local surface water management plan. Anybody have any concerns or thoughts about that?
The only concern I really have about that is, uh, I think we've neglected our, our ponds in the past here. I think we're way behind on cleaning those up and we have to have a stronger policy with that going forward if we're gonna be adding more, um, ponds that, the infiltration basins or whatever, whatever they call them nowadays. They used to call them Nert ponds for a while. But to keep those clean and so when we do have runoff or excess water and we're not dumping the nutrient back into the lake, because then we're defeating our whole goal in the beginning of putting those in. So it's a high cost, low payoff deal and, uh, for the most part, it's very expensive to maintain all those ponds. And Kara knows how many we have in town here. And especially with clay ground, you're gonna have a lot of water runoff and not absorption. And I, I think as a priority, that's something, um, with the help of whoever, whoever specializes in this type of thing, we, we need to get a program that's very strong going forward to assure that that's where our water, water quality comes from, is controlling your runoff. It's just plain and simple as far as lakes, rivers, streams. Um, our ditch system in Minnesota has polluted more lakes than, than anything, than any, than any other state. I mean, we've drain tiled this state and ditched it to run everything directly into our lakes and rivers. And that's what's polluted them. We gotta have some surface area for that water to be absorbed back into the earth before it runs off. And keeping those ponds, all the sediment out of them clear is what really helps that. So going forward, I think that's really something they have to look forward to when they're implementing these new neighborhoods and everything, is to make sure there's a maintenance policy in place and it's followed strictly. Um, just my thoughts.
I agree with that one too. And, and if I'm a little bit wrong here, I'll apologize, Todd, because you're way smarter at this than I'll ever be. But, um, defining the ponds as well, a retention pond does not get any maintenance or attention as far as I know. Um, and the reason I mention that is I live in a, you know, a frame house development with a pond in the back. Come August, just really doesn't smell very good. There's no other way to say it. And when we as a neighborhood or a group or an HOA, whatever, when we tried to bring that forward, what ended up happening is it's a retention pond, no one manages it. So we end up with not so much as a pond as a Petri dish. So, it, you know, looking at the water issue where many more experts than I am, all I know is when I open my back door, it's, it smells like someone cut the grass three weeks ago and threw it in the pond. So defining those out a little bit further as well is kind of what I kind of envisioned taking Todd's comments one step further, right? Defining what is water or a water body.
Todd, are you familiar how other cities oversee this?
They're, they're all different. I mean, some have homeowners associations that take care of their own areas. Usually it's done by a city or another regulatory or it's hired in. Uh, how they adhere to it, I don't know that, you know? Everyone has a policy, but policies aren't always followed. Until there's a complaint basis on something like this, it usually doesn't get followed or, or done because of the cost of it.
Most of the time the HOA is who is supposed to facilitate it though, right?
I don't know. It depends on the program. But usually the city's taking it upon themselves because there's so many rules and then disposal of everything. And, you know, it's a maybe Clean Water Act deal or EPA thing with what they're taking out of there. So they usually wouldn't let a resident do that. So, I don't care. You probably know a heck of a lot more than me, obviously.
The city has currently at this very moment 84 stormwater ponds, um, under the city's jurisdiction. So in the City of Victoria, ponds are placed in outlots that are deeded to the city and the city is responsible for maintaining them. Um, but as Todd noted, um, cleaning them is really expensive. So what we found, we, the global we, the state of Minnesota, the whole United States have found that, um, the Nert ponds contain a particular type of sediment that requires landfill disposal at a certain type of landfill. So if you have those, um, types of sediments in your pond, disposal is really expensive. Um, so that's not just a problem for the City of Victoria, that's a problem for the entire metro area and for the entire country. So people much smarter than me are running around, um, trying to figure out what can be an alternative strategy for disposing of this material because there aren't enough landfills in the metro area to take all the sediment from all of our ponds. So when to dredge them and what criteria to use to decide how to dredge them so that we can spend the stormwater utility funds that we have wisely. But, um, it is a, it is a big issue. Um, some of those technical edits that Laura was referring to, I am making some revisions to that section to firm up, um, some of that language and make sure those concerns about maintenance are noted in our plan so that the other agencies who receive the plan are hearing that this is, this is a problem for us and everyone else.
Good, thank you.
Um, so the last section is the community facilities and infrastructure. And then of course, uh, ending with implementation. Anybody have any comments or thoughts there? How about any, any general feedback or questions before we open up for public hearing?
I'm very curious about the implementation, um, particularly to the south. Um, how the major and minor roadways have been designed, um, I, I find it very well thought out personally. I think it's critical and, um, you know, I, I, I would say it, I like it.
Community facilities before we move on to, I guess, there's always a need for more, whether it, we gotta think ahead with these neighborhoods and everything too with the, there's always been talk of a pool, indoor, outdoor, or a water park, or they small kiddie play areas in neighborhoods. There's wet, uh, poolless parks, wet pads, I think they call them. I mean, there's
Splash pad.
Splash pads, yeah. And I think there's certain communities that would, actually would donate money to them or the clubs in town, Lions Club, uh, whoever it is. To make that part of a, a development when it comes up next time, be creative with the suggestion instead of just give us money for green space. Or just put a park in here that people are gonna drive by and occasionally use. Maybe something different, creative as far as a public use port goes, you know? Um, also our seasonal leaf dump site, um, that's a service that we're, we have to come up with. I mean, with the community, people want to get rid of their yard waste. Another expensive thing to get rid of as it piles up and you have to find a place to get rid of it and, you know, but it's better than the people letting it be in their yard or getting it into the street and it's just washing down into our ponds again and our lakes and our rivers. So it's another maintenance thing that we have to think of in the future to add as we develop. When we find more land or we find a piece of land that might be right for that. Of course, nobody wants it in their backyard. I fully understand that. It'd have to be within a commercial related area that we're gonna develop. But it's something we have to add. It has to be a, another part of the infrastructure, if you will, for the community. So they can say, hey, you know, if I move to Victoria, they got these splash pads, we got a pool, we got a skating rink, uh, we have a downtown that way I can access through a tunnel. My kids can ride their bike and go get candy and not worry about it. And I can also take my leaves and fall. Has to be well-rounded. We have to have a little bit of everything, not maybe the greatest big mall like Bloomington has or something like that. But if we have a little bit of everything, I think you can keep a lot of people happy and, and make it an attractive place to grow. But those are some things we have to look forward to adding in the future for growth.
Some towns manage the lawn waste and come up with compost that's excellent that you, as a resident, free go pick up.
Yeah, so that's, and that's something when you get involved with people that are on the green side of that, that's, that's where that expertise comes in, where you can say, hey, how can we use this land that we have effectively to have our residents compost this stuff and then make it available for them again next spring or fall to reuse? So that's a great idea. I mean, that's something we gotta look into going forward, especially when these developers come and say, well, how, you know, you're gonna plant a thousand trees in these neighborhoods, how are you gonna get rid of the leaves? What's your plan for these residents? Do you have any ideas? You know, let them try to bring some ideas forward too. It just doesn't always have to fall on the city and just say, well, now what do we do with this problem? Because then the residents are gonna bring it to the city. But if we actually get some outside information on that or see what other communities, maybe we can move forward with that.
Any other questions or comments before we open up?
I'll just say, as a, as a resident of Victoria for 12 years, and being a part of the steering committee for the comp plan with a couple other members up here, and also being, since I've lived here, I was annexed in to Victoria. I was in Lake Town Township previously and my, so where I currently live, we were annexed in. So I've lived through all that and I've lived through putting this together. And I, I know it's probably not perfect. I don't know if this document could, it's so encompassing. I don't think it's ever gonna be perfect. But I can say I'm really proud to have worked on it. And I think the consultants and everybody's done just a really good job.
And I don't think your goal is to make this perfect. You want changes to it. You know what I mean? That's what it's for, is to give a guiding principle to say, hey, we can do this. And we may have to move, maybe the, the greens in the wrong spot or the blue or whatever. But that's what we want to know. But here's what we really need in this community, whether it goes in that spot. Well, maybe not. But at least you've given it the thought and the idea that people know you need it, you know? So I think you did a great job.
Chair.
Well, go ahead.
Before you open up the public hearing, um, one of the things I had to recommend that the city, um, planning commission and the city council strongly consider is, um, putting in some type of a guideline on the maximum number of townhomes that are part of a development. Um, I know the City of Chaska did that. Uh, they put a maximum of 75, uh, units of any one type. And the reason you do that is a lot of times, there's gonna be downturns of the housing market. We've experienced that in 2008. And when you have the same product type in a big area, it's very difficult to keep those property values and the prices up. Um, house, single family houses are one thing because they're so different and you can't compare A to A and then price being the one thing that is, becomes more of a negotiating thing. But townhomes, they're almost identical. So when you got five or 10 identical townhomes that are up for sale at the same time because of the housing markets, uh, is going down, price becomes the, the driving factor and the property values go down. And so that's one of the things, um, that I would encourage the city and the planning commission and the city council to look at is to make sure that those, um, townhouse developments aren't, don't become too big and that they, uh, keep their property values over the long term.
Shouldn't there be a ratio rather than a fixed number, like of number, a percentage of townhomes per acre, say, or some, per development rather than saying the limit's 75?
You could do a, a percentage, but the, and the nice thing about having it in the comprehensive plan as opposed to zoning ordinance, it's not a hard or fast rule. It's what they have in, in Chaska is it's approximately 75, uh, houses, townhomes of the same type. So under that scenario, you could have, um, 75 row houses and
You know, and that, that density of, of the residential district that you, that you stayed in, in the zoning ordinance, the desire for a, for a ratio or a, or a approximate limit?
You, you could put it in the zoning ordinance. Again, the comprehensive plan is the, the policies and the aspirations and that usually kind of drives the zoning ordinance. Um, so it's something that you, the city could if they wanted to.
Because essentially we'll have to do both, right? If, if we state that as an aspirational goal and the, there's a lot of these, a lot of these goals that are stated in the comprehensive plan that among the next steps is, you know, city staff working through planning commission and, and city council to make adjustments to ordinances that are, fall in alignment with the agreed aspirational goals, right? Um, so I guess by necessity it would find its way into both.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I appreciate the comment. It's a great comment, a great theory. But how do you predict market trends and architectural trends 20, 30 years out? I think that might be getting too deep and too restrictive for a 10,000 foot view of the comp plan today. Just an opinion. It's, I don't know what product's gonna look like 20 years from now, what the densities might look like. We've got the densities defined. But how do you tell a developer, landowner, builder, you can only build this because we thought it looked really cool 20 years ago?
I mean, fundamentally, it's kind of, it's like diversifying your portfolio.
Right.
Right? So there, there's a, there's a high level stated aspiration to not go all in on any one single type of, I mean, in this case, we're talking about townhomes, but.
And the other thing is the comp plan is updated every 10 years. So you can always make this change or remove it, change it, if the trends do change in the future.
Well, mind if we open up the public hearing and gather some comments?
I have one little comment about implementation. Um, for the commercial district that is at Engler and Victoria Drive, uh, two of those parcels, well, one of the, the biggest parcel has a write-in, write-out. So I'd be very curious to see a zoomed in version of what the furniture roads look like and how that traffic flows when someone has to make a U-turn. Um, I think that's kind of a, it's just a, it's an unknown at this time.
Victoria Drive in where?
Engler. It's, it's not on this plan right here. Um, it's, it was sent out earlier this week. Yeah.
So my initial reaction is that, I know when we were talking at the last Steering Committee meeting that it was, it was recognizing that in terms of how these roads get accomplished, even, even some of the major roads that are, you know, bisecting the, the growth areas, that there's still a lot of flexibility in terms of how, how those get executed and what their ultimate paths might be. But, you know, generally conceptually showing the desire for, you know, north-south connectors, east-west connectors. And within developments, you know, as one development comes in and sort of commits to a location, that will start to affect how other developments come following on the heels of that. All right. Should we open up? I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and we certainly welcome your perspective. Any questions that you have, any comments that you'd like to share? And we just ask that you join us up at the podium, state your name and your address and share your thoughts. Your brave soul. Somebody's gotta go first.
I'm Claudio Groppetti, live at 2445 Heron Lane, Lake Bridge, just western edge of the city. And we're, just a comment that Patrick made about townhomes and apartment complex in general. You know, we talk about the needs of the future of the community, diverse housing, affordable housing. And what Patrick said kinda hit a chord with me and it was, I'm a single-family homeowner that bought into Victoria for what Victoria is today. And other than aspirational goals in, you know, keeping the community the same as it is today, there, there isn't any emphasis on, as we do the, you know, I guess, medium-density, high-density, how do you bring in that perspective of the existing single, single-family homes? And it's, 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 it's kind of a vague concept, but it resonated with me because I sit back and I looked at the plan and said, boy, they're putting in apartments. How far is that from my house? What's it gonna do to my property value? So just, that, that's, that's, that's one comment that I'd like to, I'd like to add. Secondly, on the Metropolitan Council, 1967, 51 years, how were you as a, first off, thank you for your, your work. Great, great stuff. How is it to work with them? Are they being more intrusive, less intrusive? Are they being dictatorial? What, what, what's, is, is there any change in sight as you see it in regards to how the Metropolitan Council is dictating to somebody like the city of Victoria? That's a question that can be answered today if anybody has any thoughts.
I might, I might queue up our consultant to, to, to speak to that because they had some of the direct interface. But while she's thinking about that, I can respond to the first question a little bit and just share some perspective. And I welcome others to weigh in as well. But with regard to, you, you know, you asked about the emphasis on how do we reconcile medium and high-density housing developing on the heels of single-family homes over time? And one of the things I appreciated throughout this process being, I was also involved in the Steering Committee as well as Planning Commission meetings. And we did spend a fair amount of time when we talked about the future, future zoning is thinking about always having some transition. And either transition in terms of making sure we don't have incompatible uses right next to each other where there's either high-density right next to low-density residential. You know, it's almost like we're skipping. You know, you, you wanna go from high-density down to medium-density, then down to, to lower-density for a single-family residential. So trying to, to be thoughtful in terms of those adjacencies, which happens, I think, at this high level for the comprehensive plan. But I know at the Planning Commission level, we frequently talk about that when developments come in. In fact, we've seen some developments come in where it's got a mix of low-density residential and medium-density. And we think about being, this new development being good neighbors to the existing development next door and trying to position the load, the low-density towards where there's existing low-density so that it's sort of, it's not so abrupt. So I think that, just from my perspective, I've appreciated some sensitivity around that, which I think is in alignment with the concern that you're sharing. And what I feel good about is that it's been a part of this process as well as a part of the implementation process to date that I expect going forward. So I don't know if anybody else has any additional thoughts on that.
Yeah, I distinctly remember having those conversations like that. It's a buffering thing is what it is really. You know, it's not a lumpy thing like this. We like to see it buffered out.
Okay.
So a single, you know, and, and it grows, but you have to have that mixed density in some places. It's just the way it works, you know, within the community. But I understand your feeling and I agree with you 100%. That should be a slow transition to the high-density, so.
And what is medium-density and what is high-density?
You got the numbers on top of your head?
Well, I mean, just roughly.
Yeah, high-density is typically your, your apartments and medium-density is typically your townhomes.
Like quad homes is high-density?
Yeah. No, quad homes is typically medium-density.
Medium, okay.
Right. And then the row houses that you find in Whispering Hills, that's typically medium-density. But then apartment buildings would be the flats. That'd be high-density. That's typically you find.
So the development just east of the city, those are medium-density?
Correct.
Yeah. So think of medium-density this way, high-density this way. That's how I picture it.
That's simple enough. Even I could figure that one out. Have my wife remember it though.
Take it back, one of these guys who said we've also as a planning commission, we spent a lot of time this past year talking about just buffers in general as we're putting more green space between different property types, between commercial and residential and just really very aware of the, not having the abrupt change from your single-family dwelling over Lake Bridge to putting apartments right next door to that. We do spend a lot of time and a lot of thought process drilling down deep when it goes to the actual planning and approval of the process.
So even though there's, there's plans here, the, the whole zoning process, that, that's still a, when you're going from one particular zone to, let's say, a high, a proposed, proposed, high-density, you still have to go through the zoning process. So it, it's not casting concrete. It's, it's...
Absolutely not. It's a guide.
The 10,000-foot view, this is kind of what we look, the city might look like 40 years from now. But we, everything has to go across this whole process before it even gets to a full approval to actually look like that.
If you focus on the south growth and, and west growth, the last several months, it seems a lot of talk about south. Is that kinda the, the plan for, for the most part? That, you know, the next, say, five to 10 years are gonna be more of an emphasis? Eighty percent of it on the south side of the city and 20 or 25 or 30 on the west side or maybe even 90, 10?
It's really market-driven. We, we have a vision we'd like to see as a, as a community, but there's all private landowners that own this property. They have to come forth and say, we want to sell it. We want to do this for the developer. We're not in a position to say that you have to do this. We're just trying to say we'd like to see it look like this to build a very nice holistic community moving forward for all of us and not just kind of haphazardly throw things together because things don't work out well that way. There's a ton of time and I, myself, Jeff Scott, I sat on this committee. We've been in many, many meetings from the Steering Committee to the Planning Commission for the last two years along with everybody else here, which is a lot of thought and a lot of, it's been a fun process and a ton of time and thought into it. It's kind of fun.
So historically, it's not only been market-driven, but also infrastructure-driven?
Correct.
Right? It, it can be cost prohibitive to develop where there's lacking infrastructure. And so I think a lot, a lot of the development, and I'm trying not to put words in your mouth, Cara, but just, you've, you've educated us in terms of how certain developments need to take place just to get the infrastructure built and the connectivity so that the next development and the next development can, can actually be financially viable or even practically viable just in terms of getting the infrastructure. Sewer, the utilities, the roadways, those types of things. So that seems to have, in recent history, guided some, some of the growth patterns and I'd expect it to continue to.
One, one, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In case in point with that, just following up on what you've said, that whole south part of Lake Wasserman was driven by a sewer that was put in and started and basically paid for upfront by the city to spur that development. And it wrapped all the way around and they, they planned it properly so it could just grow, keep growing to the south and the west as the people wanted to sell their land and have it developed. And it's great forethought by the city at that time. Even though it was expensive and a lot of people complained, it worked out because it ended up getting paid back for and that whole area is being developed now and we have the infrastructure. So that, that drives it too. We gotta look at the big picture and say, okay, if we're gonna put sewer and water in here, is this land really gonna be desirable and can we extend it far enough to make it viable for the rest of the property? So that's kind, like Jeff was saying, that's kind of what drives it too.
Would it be your, your committee, if, if you were changing the zoning to, let's say, medium-density or high-density and there is adjacent future trail that, that was planned, but if you know where Lake Bridge is at, just to the east of that, there's a little pond, and in fact, that, the home, the, the owner of that property agreed, I think, several years ago to give a little easement so we could connect Lake Bridge to Watermark. And then as you go across the east, there's several homes that are future trail, but they, they didn't wanna sell. If, if that, and that piece of property looks like, for the plan is high-density. At that time, is there a chance of putting the, that, you know, along that high-density, that six-foot easement along the edge for the, the trail to be continued or is that...
It's something that the developer would bring forward and maybe, you know, in, in, in a layover of a, a deal of, let's say, okay, you want that higher density and, or maybe a few more units in plan, then we need this land for a trail. And that's how the collaborative effort goes between the city, the developers, the landowners.
Does that happen here or is that another, another committee?
Happens here and with staff. Usually staff takes care of that on the front end. Then they bring it to us as a package, a recommendation from the builder and staff.
And that, that's a natural part of the, the developer process. It seems like most developments that, that we review has an element of, you know, either public space or trails which connect, you know, two trails that are fragmented on either side of the development. And so that, that's historically been a pretty fluid part of the review process.
One last comment and then I'll give it to somebody else a, a chance. But I would encourage, maybe if, if, if you could somehow try to emphasize a little bit more collaboration with homeowners associations. Because there's, there's a fair amount of money in a homeowners association. When you got 100 or 200 homes, you know, five or $10 a quarter can, adds up quickly. Our particular development talked about, you know, somebody said, hey, I, I, why don't we put a ice rink in the park? I know how to do it. How do, you know, how do we go about doing it? And it could be as simple as, as if, if the city could figure out how to supply the water and the homeowners association says, well, with the rink up, there's what we have, you know, that, that, that quality of life in the community. Real simple, not expensive. So that, again, collaboration, city, private organizations, just encourage more of it.
And I think if you have that, if the community or your association has that will, I'm 100% sure you bring it to staff. They'd be more than happy to collaborate with you, especially Public Works and Parks and Rec if it's that type of deal.
Yeah, and, and it's great.
And it's great. I mean, she, she's helped us out as Alliance Club and everything we've done. She's been there, Public Works staff has been there to help us as a private club, same as an association. So I just encourage you to bring that forward, get your neighbors engaged and say, hey, let's go to the city with this, see what they think.
Great. Thank you. Good job.
Appreciate our feedback. Laura, did you have any thoughts? I thought that first question was a good one. Just, you know, a general characterization about what a partner, Met Council has been throughout this process?
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Sure, I'm happy. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to address that. And obviously, any other follow-up questions to maybe after all of the, public hearing is closed. I can address any other follow-ups regarding the Metropolitan Council and our interactions with them. So obviously, this, the kickoff and impetus for this process has been because we want to meet our requirements with the Minnesota Land Planning Act. We wanna meet those 10-year deadlines every, every decade. However, even if we weren't required to do this, I think that, and as a lot of client cities that I work with outside of the metropolitan area, whether in Minnesota or other states, we do encourage cities to update their comp plan at least every 10 years, even, if not even closer timeframes, seven years, sometimes even five years. Especially a community like Victoria where you have this growth and you need to know where those major infrastructure investments are going to be and what the land uses are going to be around them. You wanna make sure that you are planning at a very high level so that then you can have those, your policymakers, when you're writing your zoning ordinances, when you are going through your subdivision processes, you know that it's meeting the higher level of your planning goals, looking into the future. So saying that, with the Met Council, we do have a set list of requirements that we have to meet. However, a lot of those requirements are kind of just checking off boxes that the city is already meeting anyway. And if we're planning in a, in a good and phased manner that is showing where our infrastructure investments are going to go and then making sure that we have enough land, people, households and jobs to support that, that infrastructure, we're going to check off those boxes regardless. So a lot of the technical aspects that Cara and myself are working through with maybe adjusting how one sentence is written or another or how specific I and I is addressed and things like that. Those are the elements that the Met Council is really looking at, this set of criteria. But we're already meeting the high-level goals just through the planning that meets Victoria's vision regardless. And so, you know, there are elements that I think, as a region, we wanna make sure that our infrastructure investments are being made in appropriate ways. And we are making sure that through this process, working with the Met Council as well as Carver County is another entity that encompasses more than just the city of Victoria and all of our neighbors to make sure that Victoria's vision can be brought through, but while still being part of a system that works. You know, we can't cut ourselves off from, at the edges of Highway 5 and keep everyone coming from Waconia out of here. We don't want that anyway, so. You know, we wanna make sure that our systems are working within the larger system and that our neighbors are also not hindering Victoria as well. So I have found that working with the Met Council, some of the detailed items on the technical side can be a bit of back and forth, but that's why I'm working on it and that's why you guys don't have to worry about those elements.
We'll thank her.
Appreciate you having me.
So, but in general, I, we are meeting the goals, I feel, that Victoria residents want as well as what Victoria needs to be meeting at a regional level. So we're kind of filling both roles already.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Jenny Junnett. I live at 7955 Narcissus Court. My backyard is one of the agricultural fields that will be transitioned into low-density housing zoning. Right now, it's just a complete yellow box on your map, which is quite lovely. But I know that the, when it gets developed by a developer, it will need to have some sort of stormwater pond, which was discussed earlier, but it'll need to have some sort of water drainage feature. And I watched the field on Highway 5, I don't remember what the cross street is that they put in, but I watched them as they're putting in all those stacked townhouses. And that was a nice contoured field. Had lots of hills and they plowed the thing flat and then they put the pond in the middle of the field with, with all their houses around it. And I'm wondering if the Planning Commission has the ability to have a say on how water features are added to developments so that it's, and, and how, like if, if the field gets plowed and it's a smack field? Or is that something that when it comes to the council for a approval by the developer, that's something that the homeowners in the neighborhoods have to say, hey, don't plow that flat? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's absolutely part of the planning process. And so as, as developments come before us, you know, the Planning Commission acts as a, as... you know, the Planning Commission acts as a, as, I mean, we give recommendations as a city council. City council actually um takes binding action based on that recommendation. Um but I know that in, in all the developments that come before us, and I know attitudes are, are evolving in the city in terms of the approach to stormwater management. Um you know, historically, we talked about how many ponds the city now maintains. I know that there's other discussions about how to treat that at more like a district level, um rather than each development. Um but it, it's certainly part of the discussion that happens here at the Planning Commission, and that gets carried forward with city staff as well as city council.
Okay.
So when they uh bring something forward to staff first usually before we even see it, you know, if it's a, if there is a certain feature, topography-wise, that is a desirable thing that is to keep, other than just looking pleasant. Um it, it's, staff usually catches that, tries to catch that. But there's also to make something buildable for the developer to buy that property, he's gonna have to make changes to it too. And that's only fair to the landowner at the time if they know they can do that beforehand without destroying something or taking down trees they should be taking down. So the first step is by staff, and I, I'd say they've done a great job the time I've been on here to try to catch those features and maintain them. But you're right, it's not always perfect and it's not always what you want to see happen to a, a naturally rolling hill field. You know, they flatten it out to make it more buildable and put roads in. So there, there is that part of it, but we try our best to keep the natural features. Uh obviously, the trees, the existing ponds, uh watersheds, um as prescribed by staff and Kara, her engineer, points those things out. So that's part of the process.
Thank you. That was my question. And then I wanted to say thank you for considering traffic issues. Um I don't want downtown Victoria to be four stoplights in a row like downtown Chanhasan is, which is the most annoying thing to drive through, because I hit all four red lights every time. And I don't want people to say, oh, I just finally got through Chanhasan, now I have to go through Victoria and be annoyed by going through Victoria and then never want to stop here. So um I do appreciate that you're thinking about that. And then I also do, I like the idea of the um MC Minnehaha, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, there we go. I do like the idea of partnering with them, um maybe creating some neighborhoods that are more parks and houses and was places that maybe are bike trail that dead ends in nowhere, could go somewhere. It would be really nice if people are, I, I have family members who live in Fridley who have taken that bike trap, trail for fun. And they're like, well, I just dead-end in Victoria, what can I do here? I'm like, you can come to my house. But, and I, and then I had to have them cross Highway Five to get to my house. But I mean, the thing is, is that if it dead-ends here, what do people think of Victoria then? It's, it's a dead end. Yeah, they can go to our ice cream shop, which is great, it's right there. Maybe they can tour around and, and go to the brewery downtown, great. But otherwise, they just turn around and go back to Excelsior and probably get their refreshment there. So I, I'm hoping that we can get them on a future extra leg of our trails. That'd be great. Thank you.
Jenny, I want to, one other thing too, just to your earlier point. Uh don't forget, when, uh when new development is proposed here.
Yeah.
It comes to us. And there's meetings just like this, and there's open meetings where, where you get your say. So get your neighbors together and come to those meetings and talk to the developers, because when a bunch of you show up, people listen.
Sure.
Plus it gives us another reason to think about that feature of that property or that change or whatever you're talking about. Brings it to light for us too. It helps a lot.
Sounds like a plan, so we'll keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just add one, one quick comment as we're transitioning here, that we don't have to wait until then. Because in, in my experience, now is the time to, you know, those type of aspirational goals in which we want to be more thoughtful about how we manage water and, you know, how we, how we carve the land. And, you know, those are all aspirational goals that are actually in the comprehensive plan. Um they should be, and I know that they are. Um they have been in the past and they are in this one. And those are the types of uh things that guide our decisions, right? So there's the ordinance side, and there's ordinances which in some cases prescribe certain things. But I know that as we review developments as a, as a commission, where there's also the aspirational side, which in my opinion matters. Um because they're protecting our natural resources and the types of, of things that, you know, when you really dive into nitty-gritty of the comprehensive plan, it's all the narrative and it's all the aspirations that it, that it's talking about that um may not be codified in the ordinance, but it, it certainly affects, I think, all of our, our influence as we work with developers and review plans, make adjustments, you know, throughout the process. So thank you for your thoughts. Anybody else? Yeah?
I'm Tim Vadnis. I live at eighty-one ten eighty-first Street uh in Victoria here in the Kirklock neighborhood. And I've lived here for thirty years and uh I am, you, one of the things that you quickly understand when you live in Victoria as long as I have and as Todd has and many others here, is you kind of, you, you live in many other, uh many other communities in that your kids may go to school in one other area and you're commercially involved in another area. One of the things that I, I think it's important for us to, if we can, clarify in this plan is uh the commercial focus of the plan. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just spend a little time discussing a couple of, uh, a couple of those pieces. The first one is on Highway Five west of town, uh kind of, one of the aspirations I really like about the comprehensive plan is the third bullet, a community with natural open spaces, neighborhood parks, paths, and trails. And that's just one of the most attractive things about this area. It just really is, is a wonderful blessing when you live here and you have all those options. To that end, uh the drive from Parley Lake Road into town, uh either going east or going west is one of the most beautiful drives in the county, if not in the state. It's just, I, to me, it's just spectacular, the natural wild of the Carver Park area on the north side of Highway Five there. It's just beautiful. So when I saw the commercial district there that you've kind of penned in there for that hill just east of the Laketown Road uh stop sign, it, to me, it just didn't make sense. I'm not sure what, what the intent is there. But um it's, it would be a dangerous spot to have access to Highway Five there. You'd have to have a light. And um, and I'm not sure what kind of commercial development would be suitable there. So whatever, I'm not sure, do you, do, does anybody know what was kind of tentatively scheduled to go in there? What type of, is that retail or? It, it just seems to be oddly placed to me.
Yeah, I don't think anything was really designated for the spot. It's just to spread out our commercial areas and have the flexibility to have maybe something there if.
Yeah, I, I would think if we're going to develop anything along that road, and, and again, I just, I just, I, I hate seeing us do that along the road. I understand the need to sprinkle a little commercial activity around the community, but that, to me, just seems to be a, a difficult spot to do it. The other one is on Laketown Road there. Uh I'm, I'm assuming that would be some sort of little convenience store.
Very possible.
Something like that.
So there's no definite plan for the commercial there. Once again, the word plan here is the scary word, because it's, it's a, a guiding factor that says, hey, if it's possible, we would like to see something accessible on a commercial basis, possibly on that end of town, as the population moves that way.
Yeah, but.
For the person living off of those roads right in that town there, don't necessarily come all the way downtown or go all the way to our south corridor to maybe pick up a loaf of bread at the corner store. Um not saying commercial, being industrial or anything like that, but it might be a retail store.
Okay.
And you're right, the access to Highway Five is always dangerous.
Yeah, and I just.
Every single thing is, but there's not, there's not saying there might not be a frontage road put in for the four commercial properties or five, whatever's there, uh a shootout onto a commercial road in and out of there. So it, you know, and that's all, a lot of that's dictated, Kara knows by what the state lets us have for openings and what can be located in right away and with the monies coming towards possibly Highway Five changing, you know. It, it's just a possibility.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. I just, I just think it's, it, it, it just, to me, it just doesn't make sense. Um i- unless the plan is, if, and I don't underst, I, I don't know how segmented Highway Five is likely to become. Um it doesn't, to me, it just completely uh is in conflict with the aspiration of keeping open space and natural beauty. Uh it's, anyway, I just, especially on Highway Five there, I just, I, I, I'm not sure. I just don't see that as being a viable spot for any type of commercial activity. Uh better places would be developing along County Road Ten. And it'd be interesting, I don't, you know, there's a lot of development planned in Chaska between two twelve and Victoria Drive. It'd be interesting to see if we, if, if we could see their view of their comprehensive plan kind of uh shadowed in uh east of Victoria Drive there. And, and I just, I think it's important, one of the challenges that we have with Victoria is, is, you know, developing a little bigger commercial area. And this zone down here, County Road Ten and Victoria Drive is just, I think, uh is the likely best location for commercial development, meaning uh large, larger-scale grocery store, restaurants, uh you know, the bigger stores and things like that. Uh is, is there, is, do you know is, where Chaska is at with their twenty forty plan?
They're still working on it, but I do know that, that area is, has been designated as the green belt for the last twenty years. And I believe that's what they're gonna have as well in this area. That's east of Victoria Drive.
So again, we kind of, you know, one, and I've lived here long enough to know and the, the struggles that we face uh in developing commercial enterprise zones around the Victoria community. Um but if that's all greenway, if that's, if that's going to be very limited in commercial availability, it seems to me that County Road Ten uh between County Road Forty-three or the, the current County Road Forty-three and Victoria Drive needs to be more, I think, potentially planned more commercially intensive. It, to me, it makes a lot more sense to have that more commercially intensive than to have medium-density residential slotted in there. So if Chaska isn't going to be developing everything on the north side and the south side of County Road Ten from two twelve all the way to Victoria Drive.
I can speak to that, sorry. Um so HKGI is also helping the city of Chaska with their um comprehensive plan and they have an extension. Um they have not entered the six-month review phase yet. They are days away from that. So the city of Victoria staff will be reviewing their proposed future land use plan. Pat is correct that there is a bit of um green buffer in some of the parcels just next to the city of Victoria, but along um County Road Ten is their southwest growth area, which um especially County Road Ten is focused on uh industrial as well as some commercial. I believe there's even a possibility of a Hy-Vee going in along there. Um and so the continuation of the commercial is shown here with kind of the business flex um employment uh around the um, the rail line was intentional with how um we were looking forward. And then also putting some of those um medium and high-density residential along there to help support those businesses. Um because commercial areas also need customers who are going to come to them, so. Um and with the possibility of future growth beyond our south and west areas that by twenty fifty or twenty sixty, those might have more, um there might be more availability for commercial growth um along County Road Ten to the west.
Mm-hmm, exactly. So when I look at the, when I look at the numbers, look at the growth projected for the next twenty years, to me, it just mean, it just makes a lot more sense to be a little bit more intentional. And I'm, I'm, I'm just giving you my input, but it seems to be that, that we really should be more intentional about uh trying to do what we can, I think, to uh plan for more commercial and light industrial uh flex employment. So that, that area right now on County Road Ten, uh between the railroad line and the current County Road Forty-three going south of County Road Ten, that, to me, just seems like that's area that all needs to be potentially developed as uh commercial and flex employment. And when, when you talk about customers, uh there, there's a huge customer base already existing in this, in, in all of Victoria that's developed now. So there's a lot to draw from now. I think we, those of us that have used, been accustomed to driving uh eight or ten miles to a grocery store or, you know, another retail store, um this would be, this would be a great option to drive down to, to major retail in this area, so. I know, but, and especially if, if it can dovetail with what's going on at Chaska. So that's, I think, the key here is if, if there's the ability to bring forward some visibility of that, and it sounds like that's coming, so that's good. So, thank you. And again, thank you for your effort in this. I think it's really good to, to look out. It's, it's a challenge in the Victoria community to build kind of some of these commercial districts, so appreciate you looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me answer a question.
Sure.
Um Laura, I'm curious with this twenty forty comp plan, how the city of Chaska, their involvement is going to be? This specific area. Um I know we've talked a lot about the western communities and, and their participation in our growth and how we are good neighbors and how we connect. What, are there any items with Chaska that's going to be critical with how we combine, uh we join forces?
So I could certainly speak to that now or after the public hearing, whichever you prefer.
Yeah, you're welcome to share his thoughts.
Okay. Um so uh the city of Chaska has had an opportunity to comment, um I believe, were they on the list of commenters? Yes. So um they have commented and um general, they have seen our south growth plan generally are um in support of that, uh as well as um, I believe, some comments as far as, or wait, did they wave com, sorry, I can never keep track.
I don't think they've um submitted their comments. We've got comments from the townships.
Okay.
Waconia, um but I don't think we've received any comments from Chaska yet.
I see.
But the one thing, um we are working with Chaska very closely on a County Road Ten uh traffic study. And so we're meeting with them on a monthly basis. So they, the, the planning director, the uh city engineer, very, know very well what we're planning uh along County Road Ten.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair. Um regarding the, the commercial along Highway Five, um if the Planning Commission and City Council want to, one of the things we can easily write in the comp plan is that any type of commercial there should be a low-intensity commercial. So kind of, uh if you're addressing the lights factors, so you're not allowing the gas station to go there, that's going to be really brightly lit. Um you can also talk about having more landscaping in that commercial area and more of a smaller-scale commercial. So you're not really talking about a, again, a, a big parking lot with a grocery store. So those are the things you could write into the comp plan with, that would be appropriate to um give guidance for future development in that area.
Yeah, so I'm, I'll just share, share a thought. I'm, I really appreciate that feedback, though I'm, I'm a little bit torn only because being, being involved in the process that I feel like um there was some intention to locate that, that level of intensity where there, there's a good access to Highway Five. And I, I agree, the View Corridor is incredible to, to the north. Um but by co-locating that higher intensity near the highway, it allows for, I think, more preservation of sort of the open space and the beauty in the residential neighborhoods that are, you know, surrounding the area and, and south of there, which is, I think, uh experientially um important as well. Um so I'm, I'm, there, it feels like there wants to be a, a balance, um at least with regard to that, that Highway Five issue.
In light of the fact that there's a um highway study going on up to the Dairy Queen, and let's hypothetically say that we have four lanes up to Dairy Queen, would that change your thoughts on going, going west Dairy Queen, on the commercial? And more just a, that's a, you, I don't need an answer.
Yeah, well, it's all, that's all. Yeah, well, that's all, that's all part of the puzzle, right?
Because it's a, it's a new piece, it's a new fact tonight that I don't think was part of discussions.
Right. And, you know, the, our, the consultant and city staff has been really open with all of us that have been involved, that there's gonna be new information that comes next, next week, next month, next year, and that's gonna influence, influence all of this. So I think this is good feedback. I think let's come back to this as a, as a talking point, as we kind of summarize, like, what's the next steps or any recommended adjustments or things to consider? But, you know, this is all being factored into how, how we go forward from here.
I think having a concentrated commercial area put on our plan protects us from strip development, which is very good. You know what I mean? Like pop-up commercial along a busy highway.
Yeah.
So we are focusing on a place rather than giving people the opportunity to have little, little mini strip malls along the way.
That kind of speaks to some predictability, too. You know, that we, that we talk about how if we are too conservative in showing all low density residential, we not only risk not meeting some of our density goals, you know, so trying to find those pockets of areas to have increased density, but we also, there's a predictability challenge that we get into when we get too conservative with all low density residential, and then all of a sudden, it's really practical to have a higher density use in a location, but suddenly it's in my backyard that I just bought and built a Signal family home recently, and it's really difficult to unwind from that. Certainly easy to go, easier to go the other direction, but anyways, it's all, it's all part of the puzzle.
So good feedback. Anybody else have any thoughts or questions to add? You're welcome, yeah.
Hi, I'm Anna Brown with the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District, Planner Project Manager with them. I'll be very brief, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the planning commission and the city at large for its support in this Greenway vision and really support more broadly on protecting the natural assets and the water resources that you have in the city. I think the city is really uniquely positioned, both in the abundant natural resources that it has, but also in the way that you place value on those resources and how you sort of understand that these resources really can create a competitive advantage for the city if it's planned along with development. So this, the watershed district is committed to working in the Six Mile Creek Hallstead Base of Watershed, to really focusing our capital improvements and our staff time in Victoria, St. Boniface, Minatrista, the whole headwaters of our, our watershed district for our next plan cycle, which is sort of aligned with your 10-year plan cycle. And we've really enjoyed this process of meeting with your steering committee, working with staff and, and generating this Greenway vision, where we continue to work with Hoysington and with staff to make sure that the vision is really well presented in the plan, because this is really a sort of flag to show what we can do. And then we'll work after the plan is adopted to, to be with the city as it looks at implementation tools and really assist and facilitate in any way we can as we move towards implementation. So yeah, just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you and, and express the watershed district's commitment and support to working in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a great project, but not to forget about the Lake Wasserman project, too. Thank you for your help on that. That's incredible.
Great, thank you.
And recognizing we're only just, just beginning, right? Like doubles in the details and how we implement this, this vision, but we're heading in the right direction, it feels like, so. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, we certainly thank you all for your engagement in this process, your perspectives and, and your questions. Hopefully, we've answered some, we haven't answered all of them, I know that, and so the work continues. Any other thoughts? Reaction to some of the feedback?
Just, just for purposes of this group but also others in the community.
Would you mind joining us up at the podium?
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. John Carlson, that was a great meeting, great input. Just thought it'd be helpful as you close out to indicate that there will be additional opportunities for input for people to provide at city couple, at the next city council meetings. So I don't know if that's something you want to make sure you reference here before you close out.
Thank you. Yep, absolutely. I, I'll touch on that as here, as we discuss next up after we take action. And thanks, John. John was on the steering committee and also Parks and Rec Committee, right? So appreciate your perspective. Open up the commission. Any thoughts, comments, concerns?
Well, I was glad to see there were some comments and some public feedback because it makes our work seem worthwhile and showing up for all these meetings and you guys especially that were on the committee, but, and the positive attitude everyone had towards this. And nobody really came here with a negative attitude that they can foresee the future that things are gonna change and, and stuff has to change. And there's an opportunity to change, but also the change is for the positives, so I appreciate everyone's input.
Any thoughts on, you know, Tim's comments are sticking with me on Highway 5 and, and that, that bit of commercial down there. And I absolutely understand his point, but I also look at, you know, the homes that are potentially gonna be in that area. And I, I absolutely respect driving eight miles to a grocery store, but I also know that people don't want to do. I mean, we do, we kind of joke about that, but people really don't want to. They want convenience and it's not that far, but, but it is, boy, if I lived over there, it'd be nice to, I was gonna say rent a movie, I know, we don't do that anymore. Whatever we do now, that I need. You know, there's, there's, there's a convenience and there's, there's gonna, it's single family, there's potentially a lot of homes out there. It's gonna look a lot different. And I, I, it, it might be just, I mean, it, it just, it could be in the future. But I, Jeff, I'm with you, I totally understand, it's a beautiful view out there and growing pains, I guess.
Two, two barriers that have to be considered are, there's a lot of wetlands in that area just north of County Road 10, there's also a railroad track, so that makes it tricky. You can't get large parcels for commercial there. I mean, you have to go west.
You're talking, are you talking to down? I'm talking up on 5 going up.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking south.
No, no, we gotta do that down there, but that, just that little piece is, sticks with me.
Can I just make the comment on that, too? I think you talked about not having.
Excuse me, the people, we can't get the audio and we have to record this, sorry.
Yeah, your name and address, please. That way.
It's One E to Grow Petty and I live at 2445 Heron Lane in Lake Bridge. But is it Mary Jo made a comment about pop-up shops kind of thing and where people would stop and go? If, if the focus is to get people downtown Victoria, to go into the restaurants, into the little shops, and I think there's talk behind Dairy Queen of that 13 acres of doing residential retail, the more retail you can get in that downtown section is you're gonna draw the people downtown, and I think that's the goal. But if you have a strip, not a strip mall, but you're gonna, on that 5 section, which the traffic is really fast on there, and if you've got people pulling out, whether it be not maybe a gas station, but something else, what would you put in there? You know, maybe a Starbucks, but you're gonna have a lot of people coming and going out of there, I think it's gonna create more accidents to be on that spot. And I think if you could draw more retail into the downtown, not to copy Excelsior, but Excelsior has the restaurants and the little boutiques. If that's what the city is trying to create, I think it's better to make that concentration of all that retail in one section instead, because it's not that far. You're talking, what, 95 miles from where that commercial is gonna be located to get downtown, so.
And generally, I'd agree with that comment, too. And the restaurants and the breweries and everything, those are destinations, the people are gonna go to them no matter where they're at, and if they're downtown, that's exactly where they should be. But if one of these small tire shops or oil change places want to open up on Highway 5, we don't want them downtown. That's not what downtown's for. You don't bring your car downtown to get an oil change, but wouldn't it be nice to maybe have an oil change? I don't know, I do my own, but maybe that's, you know, a small use type deal or, or that little corner store or dollar store or whatever people go to that's small, quiet, shuts down at 8, 9 o'clock at night.
Dry cleaning.
Yeah, anything like that. There's large possibilities that aren't destinations, but they're convenience. Okay, I gotta go to Chaska to pick up three bolts. Oh, no, I don't, there's one right outside of Victoria, I hop out there. So that's what it's left open for, I think. I understand what you're saying. What you're kind of talking to or edging towards is destination type stuff. I agree, that wouldn't be the right place for it. You don't want families pulling in, in and out there to a restaurant on Highway 5 during rush hour traffic. But if it's to have, make an appointment for an oil change, you know, type deal, I see that as a possibility with that. And just, just to keep the idea open and have the space available, we also have to attract somebody to come out there. Who wants to put a business on Highway 5? It's someone that needs a volume, someone looking at them. A restaurant usually doesn't need that, because people look that up and say, I know where that restaurant is, we're gonna go there. But people driving by, Michael, that's right, I need an oil change tomorrow. So we have to have someone attracted to that spot, too. That's the other part of having it colored in red. It might sit empty if we just leave it red and don't, don't have the ability to change that zoning at some time. It might end up residential because we can't fulfill with commercial. So, but at least we have the flexibility to say, yes, we can have commercial there, and people are aware that that might happen, so.
Well, I think throughout this process, I've, I've appreciated the dialogue that's happened, both at steering committees and, and planning commission, that there has been sensitivity around identifying other areas for commercial and mixed use is not an indication of, of sort of abandoning the, the strength of the downtown concept. And in fact, with the downtown central business district study, as well as this plan and continued, I mean, there's, there's still critical mass and, and desired growth to, to strengthen the downtown, but I, but what I've heard is that based on how we grow in the future, there's actually the necess, the necessity to expand our, our commercial and, and mixed use based on demand, and not that it's gonna take away from, from downtown, but perhaps be complementary.
Yeah, and I don't think it, it abandons our, our goal for, you know, keeping open spaces either. It's just, it's just part of growing to, to maintain the city.
I believe the term we used in the, in the committee was neighborhood commercial to serve the residents of that neighborhood, the can, this store, the rent the movie thing. Do you have, do you have Redbox now? It's still kind of there. But they're to serve those residents for the gallon of milk, whatever they need, it's convenient, it's quick, it's easy access. I don't think we're gonna have a large manufacturing facility more likely resting on Highway 5 in your backyard, but it's hard to say what the market's gonna bring between now and then.
That's true. I remember, you, you jogged my memory, and, and we, we can't predict what's gonna go in there. I mean, we can't say this is what it's meant for, but I remember there, we've had so much discussion also about maintaining our population. So as people get older, they have, you know, a, a single level home to live in, maybe a row house where, you know, you, it's mixed there, and so we have just a little bit of retail for, just to make it super easy for elder, elderly, so you don't have to go downtown to pick up those things. And, and, you know, kind of identifying certain little locations where something like that might work, and that might be a perfect location.
To the east on County Road 10, Chaska has, where the Hy-Vee land has been purchased, they have their commercial area requiring heavy density employment. I don't know what the exact zoning is that dictates that, but I know part of the 2040 comp plan really talks about the, the interest of not just being a bedroom community, actually growing a tax base and having business here. I question if the County Road 10 and Victoria Drive commercial, the big parcel there, if there's a way we could, I don't want to limit ourselves, but if there is a way that we could try to influence higher employment there. I know it's, it's a priority to Chaska. Have they done it yet? No, but it's, it's part of their plans.
Amazon has already picked their place.
True, yes.
We only offered 1.2 billion.
All right, so our task tonight.
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Sure.
Sorry. So in particular with the flex employment district, or excuse me, designation, we wanted to write within how that's described to encourage that business parks and things along those lines that have a maybe higher level of employment versus maybe some general industrial uses that include warehousing. That's not to say that those are not, are completely out of the question, but it's more, we want to have not just industrial areas, but areas that have kind of that higher employment element to it and can bring along that tax base, as well as, you know, just have, so people can work in this area as well as reside here. So to kind of, that was sort of the vision for that southern area with the flex employment, plus the commercial hopefully integrating into that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I originally thought that the, the flex employment had a description talking about higher employment uses. And so I reread it and sure enough, it doesn't. It does talk about the examples of showroom, flex space, data center, manufacturing space, but the title itself suggests it's gonna be a hi, more of a higher level of employment. So it may be something you would want to include in that description of, before you talk about the examples, to, to say that it's supposed to be for higher level employment and not necessarily just for warehouses.
This sounds like a definition issue. Or like even hearing you say higher level employment, like, you know, I think we've got to be clear about what, what the goal, what the intent or what the goals are.
But more of a description, I think, would help with that goal of a higher level of employment area versus warehouses. But we can, I could ask Hoysington and Collier to come up with something.
Right.
Okay, so obviously our task tonight is to come up with a recommendation to go forward for council consideration. It's been a, a long process, lots of, lots of good feedback. I think we heard a lot of good comments tonight. Are, are you all satisfied with, with what you're seeing? Satisfied with the feedback you got and, and questions and answers that we've, we fielded? Are there any recommendations for adjustments or things for further consideration that either staff or, or our consultant can think about or at least bring to the next meeting with, with council for further consideration? I, I heard, two things I heard, you know, Pat, you just mentioned, you know, some clarity on the description for the flex employment. Yeah, I, I think that even just tonight's discussion is maybe a demonstration if there's a little bit of lack of clarity there, that if we can define that a little better, that, that would be a positive thing. I can appreciate the aspirational goal of, you know, how we execute it with regard to maximum number of townhomes in a single development, but, you know, something about an aspirational goal for a, the desire for a mix, a mix of. a mix of density within any, within a single zone, you know, if we want to limit that to the, I guess, medium density residential is where you were coming from, right?
Mm-hmm.
I guess those, I'd agree with those two adjustments. Anybody have any others?
The one thing I brought up before, and I don't know if this is the time or place, especially when we start talking about implementation, but was the, of a, a high school. So is that, is that dead?
Actually, so I have a, a number of lists of things to do, and that is one of them, is to take a look at the comprehensive plan and look at the high school narrative. Because I, as part of this County Road ten discussion, I sat in a, in a, a task force with some people from the school districts, and they are talking about that the Eastern Carver County School District wants to build another, or needs to build another high school soon. And I, I haven't actually had the time to read the community facilities chapter of the comprehensive plan, but we should discuss that, because Chaska's got a high school, Chanhasen's got a high school, and to get your name, the city of Victoria, out there, high schools are like one of the number one ways of doing that. So it'd be something that the city, the planning commission and the city council should want to look into.
I, I brought it up before in one of the comp plan meetings, maybe a year ago. And I have, I'm, I'm not seeing it now. Like I said, I don't know if this is the time or the place. But the thing that I heard was the interaction between the school district, right? And it goes back to kind of what we were talking about a little bit earlier, as far as how are we gonna go ahead and implement this into, we used, we used roads a- as an example before, but in this particular case, we'd be talking about a school district. Part of Victoria from a, from a comp perspective is, right now, we have, i- if I remember right, we have people living in Victoria who go to five different high schools, right? Holy Family, Chan, Chaska, Waconia, Minnetaka. So I, I'm not, I, through the, through the conversation of the comp plan, I haven't been hearing about that particular thing. If we're talking about community building, we start with, you, you know, one of the key things would be a high school, and we're sending our kids all over the place. So just a note to leave out there, it sounds like you're on top of it, Patrick, so it's there, but it would be one of those things, I think, that we want to make sure we, we leave on the radar. At least my suggestion.
Laura, do you have anything to add to that? I, I'm only asking, just giving you an opportunity to share, because I feel like there, it, I don't remember specifically, but I feel like it was discussed during the process, and I thought that there was some good reasons why we, why we as a group moved past it, that there were some either foregone conclusions to date, or, but I'm not remembering specifically. So if, if you don't have any new information.
I'm afraid I wasn't involved during that time, so I don't actually know the background on the school district discussion in regards to the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
It's certainly something that Pat and I can discuss with Brad, who has been with this project longer, and perhaps Karen. Anyone else.
Okay.
There, there might be viability for reasons for it to not happen, but it would be one of those things that at least one person who lives in Victoria is curious about.
Yeah, well, I don't want to misguide it. I, I'm not adding any, any new valuable information other than I thought that we had crossed that bridge, but it sounds like it's a good action item.
We did discuss it, and I think we were waiting for the school district to give us some direction in their long-term planning, because they hadn't got that far yet. They hadn't, they'd talked about elementary schools, but had not talked about high schools, if I remember the meeting correctly. It's kind of this thing that got lost, which didn't make any sense to me at all during that meeting.
Okay. John, did you have anything to add? And I saw your hand up, and since you were involved in the process, maybe you've got better memories than some of us.
Well, I don't know, but I don't, I would, no, I don't think I do, but we did talk about it, and I know one of the things that we did discuss as well, at least there was some reference to it, was the, the facilities component of it. If you look at our current Victoria Recreation Center, the reason we have a successful Victoria Recreation Center is a partnership with the school district. In our plan, we have, in our plan for a, a large park potentially on Pearson Lake. For that to realistically happen, or to make it more realistically happen, could tie into a partnership with the school district. And so there's implications, valuable implications perhaps, positive implications for our plan and for our city development beyond consolidation that you're referencing, Bob, but could help us in other areas such as facilities and the possibilities when you look at combining resources. So I, but I know we talked about it, but I know we didn't come to any specific inclusions, and it's probably because of the reason you're referencing, that we were kind of ahead maybe of the, of the game. But since you brought it up, I think that was, I wanted to make that reference, because I think it's a, it's an important component. I think the other aspect of it is some of that stuff is competitive. And I look at Chaska, look at Chanhasen, but then I also look at, and I look at Waconia, but then I also look at Carver. And would it be more to our advantage, if there's going to be another school district, to have that in Victoria perhaps than in a Carver? Is it? Does it? So it, I don't, it's a question, not an answer.
I think it's a great, great question. I agree with that. It'd be awesome to have it in Victoria, and it would bring a lot of, make a huge statement for a community, imagine what the process is. And we had talked about it in length at one of our community meetings, it just, we were waiting on the district to give us some direction, is what I recall.
Well, do we all agree that this is a good action item? I mean, in addition to the two that I mentioned before, that, you know, for, for staff and HKGI to circle back, because it sounds like there may be some looming information out there that wasn't quite ready for us earlier, and there's still time for that to influence our processes, is my understanding.
I think it's a great item. Be a nice adjustment. I don't know what the process is to add that adjustment. Does anybody know?
I would just, I think the chair has taken a list of items for us to look into, and I would add that to that list.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm, and I, I think that so far we've got three items on that list for, you know, some pointed conversations and potential adjustments, but I, I don't know that we're in a place tonight to like, prescriptively state exactly what, what changes to the comprehensive plan language is necessary. And I'm not sure that it's, it's required of us to do that tonight. It, it feels like, you know, if we're in general agreement with the overall approach, and I've got the major items that need more.
Well, the, the, the thing here may, maybe, and I don't know how it works, but if, in, in looking at, in looking at the slide that's up there now, would that be public and institutional? Is that the category that it would fall under? Or does it require its own category, right, educational or? I, I realize I might be really diving into the, into the weeds, but if there's a category that would need to be created or zoning implementing, you know, implications, you know, that's where I see it moving into our part on the, from a feedback perspective on the comp plan. Is because if, if we get a school, we gotta put it on, you know, we gotta put it in the plans or on the land, right?
So the schools, though, can be placed in R1, R2, R3 through a condition of use permanently, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, I think the, not necessarily the location is important. I think the main thing is just having some dialogue in there that we're gonna want to work with the school district to come up with, find a location.
That makes sense.
I'm curious what the efficiencies are with Lake Pearson. What is the connection? You touched on that a little bit, but I didn't fully quite understand why the school would want to be by the lake, Lake Pearson. Does, can someone comment to that? I just don't fully understand that.
Well, John, I'm not sure you, please clarify if you, if you, I'm not getting this right, but I don't thi- think you're suggesting that that, from a location standpoint, represents a good site for a school, but rather you're, it sounded like you were highlighting the partnerships, because we are planning, I guess, somewhat of a regional park. I'm not sure if that's the exact right term, in that southwest corner of Pearson as part of the, the comprehensive plan. But it sounded to me like you were talking about the viability of those types of, you know, park infrastructure can have synergies with school, school districts and otherwise.
Yeah, I think, good question, and I probably confused the, the point, because it's kind of commingling two things. One, in the plan, aspirationally is having a park at Pearson, which is our crown jewel lake, really. Although we're gonna have all of our lakes be crown jewels, right? Then that's, that's our future. But Pearson Lake is great, would be a great park for actually, you know, swimming, et cetera, et cetera. Also, we do have, and, and it is in our plan, aspirational component in the narrative, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, okay. But also it's the component of a large park where you can have facilities that, if you want to talk about recreational, and that's where you can get into the sharing. Now, whether or not you would have some of that within a large acreage property that would be there, or whether you maybe would have some of that shared benefit, you talked about pool before. You, you know, we talked about other, other, but just take the pool. Whether, whether it was there, whether it was in another location, if you take a look at the ice sheet arrangement we have, view of it is similar to that, and it may or may not be at a, at a similar location. So, you know, leveraging is a great way of being able to have more resources than we can. Because I think before, when the city did a pool study, to have a covered pool, it was going to cost something like fourteen million dollars. If I can remember correctly. I don't know, does that help? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we formulate a motion? Should I take a stab at it? All right, I will make a motion that we recommend approval of the long-term comprehensive plan as presented with three additional considerations, and you can wordsmith this, of course, but one being consider encouraging mixed densities such as by stating a maximum number of townhomes in a single development. You know, find a way to, to fit that aspirational goal in. The second being some clarity on the description of, within our flex employment district, whether there's a higher level of employment component of that. And the third being evaluation of, of the high school with regard to other agencies, school districts, and other reports that are pending. I think I got it all. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, certainly want to thank you all for your feedback, those that are still here. It's highly valued, and this will all go before city council now. What date?
November twenty-fifth, and then December tenth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth? Got the wrong date in the agenda then. Twenty-sixth, November twenty-sixth, and December tenth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda tonight, which is also under discussion. And this is a public hearing regarding the adoption of the official zoning map. Paul, are you gonna walk us through this one?
Chair, commission members, thank you. Today, I'm here to present the topic of adopting the official zoning map for the city of Victoria. This item is something that we should do when we update our zoning ordinance. Ordinance number four twenty repealed and replaced the zoning code of the city of Victoria. One thing that was not done was updating all of the zoning maps to include those zones. And so this is just a bit of housekeeping for that particular item. Just a little bit of history, back in May, and I believe in July of 2017, we updated our zoning to include residential R1, R2, R3, and also R4. We also included some updated language to CBD, C1, C2, and some additional items to our PUD. And so basically, what we're looking to do today is to pass an ordinance updating the zoning map to go from this description presented in front of you here to the ones that were updated in those ordinances that were passed last year. And this visually looks like this attached map. And so I'll slowly go through this, since it's quite large, or maybe zoom down a little bit. And so really what we're looking at is the very bottom key, right here, which shows the new and updated zoning types. Again, we took this from the official zoning map provided by the clerk's office, and basically updated the descriptions in that key below. So nothing has changed as far as colors on the map, just the descriptions provided to the map.
Paul, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Just because you're, you're on that, so we have many more districts than we have on our map.
Correct.
Is that simply because you're only showing colors which currently have assignment?
Right, those that exist.
Those that exist, right, but that's not, not precluding, as, as we create, say like an R4?
Yes.
If, if we get to that point, then we would amend this map with that in the legend, sort of as we go.
Correct.
Okay.
And so today we ask for a hearing and a possible motion.
Great, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but.
By all means.
I'm sure how much more you had. All right, well, thank you for that overview. Any comments or questions?
I just question why this doesn't go further down to include all the annexed land?
Because this is the official zoning map that we have on file, so since we don't have jurisdiction, we didn't zone it.
Okay, so it's not worthwhile to wait?
I, I would not, because right now, how should I say this? Since we didn't update this map, our old zoning kind of still is in place. The R, the non-R1, R2, R3, R4, and so until we update the zoning map, that doesn't really take effect.
At minimum, there's conflicting language that's now on the books with regard to a map that doesn't coincide with the language.
Correct.
And, and when, once we annex the property, the zoning takes place anyway?
Oftentimes, yes. At the bottom of an ordinance, it'll say the official zoning map shall be amended to include the, the new annexed property or rezoning if a rezoning has been done.
So we're gonna need to get a bigger sheet of paper.
We will.
Typically, when you, when the city rezones a property, you do it on a property-by-property basis, and then the zoning map automatically changes based on that ordinance that was adopted. When they changed the, the residential districts a couple of years ago, and it went from R1 to this R1, R2, R3, they didn't, they, they didn't designate which properties were going to be rezoned in that ordinance. So we needed to clarify which properties were actually being rezoned, and the easiest way to do this is to adopt this official map.
Any other questions? I mean, it seems pretty straightforward. I, I do agree that this seems administrative in nature, that we've got to, we just missed this, this step.
It was kind of during our transitional time, when this would have taken place.
Right, with staff transition and, yeah, the time when we approved those ordinance adjustments and, yeah. So in some ways, kudos for catching it and catching us up.
Thank you.
Anybody care to formulate a motion?
Excuse me, it is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm very sorry. We do need to open up for a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And since I'm seeing no one in the audience, I will make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we could entertain a motion, if anyone was so inclined.
I motion to recommend approval of the ordinance updating this zoning map for the city of Victoria to the city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I assume this will go forward with the, this goes before city council as well, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And next meeting, did I hear you? And next meeting, did I hear you say the twenty-sixth?
Correct.
Okay. For those that are listening online, I thought we should say that. Since they're not here, I'm assuming they're all, all at home listening. All right, so we'll move on. Next on our agenda is council meeting updates. And we've had two council meetings since the last time we came together as a group. One was October twenty-second and the other was November seventh. Anybody attend those, have any?
Was it the last one?
Anything?
And I took notes there on my desk.
Ah.
And I was here. Well, we're gonna talk about, we're gonna, we're gonna have a presentation tonight on Downtown West, which was, uh, a developer, if I read that correct, right? Yeah, okay, it was for the thirteen point five acres over by the Dairy Queen, which is, uh, pretty exciting. So you get a professional update from Patrick as opposed to me. The one thing that did, uh, that I remember offhand that, uh, did, that we had some influence on was the Basser property. That was, came to the, uh, city council for the preliminary plot, and that was approved.
Give me that project.
Yeah, I think so. That's the Basser right off, right off of, uh, Victoria Drive, right next to,
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
You know, kind of coming down towards Marsh Lake. Where they, I, I, I will say, I think he did a really nice job on that. You know, when we, when we saw the first, first, we saw a couple of different designs, and you remember the cul-de-sac on the west end? And, uh, it had just that little, the trail that goes down to a, another cul-de-sac, basically, that's about to be built. And it was, it was a little trail, but it was really stuck between two homes and didn't look very user-friendly. And he, it started out, if I remember correctly, thirty-four homes. I think he ended up at thirty, so I think four were taken out altogether, which helps for alignment. On the east end, coming along Highway eleven, so it's, it's back far in that bridal lane. The, they're gonna, the alignment is gonna be much better with the, as neighborhoods come further south. All in all,
Also saved the woods.
Saved majority of those woods back there. All in all, I mean, personally, that's, that's the best experience I've had with the developer, really,
It was fantastic.
Working with us to, it's gonna be ni-, it's gonna be tight, but it's gonna be a real nice project. And the trees, uh, uh, along the, the sidewalks and.
Prototype the community needs, the price point the community can use.
It was also good news, if you remember, uh, when he first came to us, so, uh, Terry Hartman is developing that, and he was not gonna build the houses, so he's entered, entered into agreement with Lennar. And when he talked to us, he, he wasn't exactly sure what the price point was gonna be. I wanna say he thought it was probably in the four hundreds and could go up. But his sense as he's sort of dialed it in with them, they're more in the three hundreds. And potentially low three hundreds at a starting point. So really nice.
Mm-hmm. The process stood out.
Did.
Because I think all the, all the attributes and the aspect, you know, there were multiple options presented, and, and it seemed like the process is what sort of allowed this flexible back and forth exchange of ideas that got to the best solution, so.
Yeah, yeah. Very good. That's my report.
Good job, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And without notes.
Without notes. And I sat through all of it.
Um, so that was the last one. Anybody have anything from October twenty-second to, to share?
Um, I just wanted to add a couple of things to that meeting. Um, the council also, uh, adopted the floodplain ordinance that the planning commissions worked on. Um, the other, uh, discussion that was kind of, um, had a lot of, had a lot of discussion on was the two-year mayor term. Um, that's something that the city had, uh, for ninety-some years, and then they just recently changed it, like, four or five, fi-, four or six years ago. Um, a resident, uh, had emailed one of the council members and suggested going back to a two-year term. And, um, one of the main reasons, I think, that, that resident was suggesting it was, then every two years, the residents were able to vote out a majority of the council if they didn't like how things were going. So, so every two years, three councilmen, or two councilmembers and the mayor would be up for election. I think that was their main reasoning. Um, the other thing is, that they talked about is Lake Wasserman Park financing. Um, trying to figure out how to pay for that park. And it, to do it in either stages or to do it all at once. And I think they're kind of struggling with trying to figure out how to finance that.
With regard to the, the term discussion, Pat, was there, was this just a informational discussion? Or was there some action taken or some next steps identified?
No, they, you're, thanks for asking. Um, they, they couldn't make any, they can't make any changes to the ordinance cause, um, that, there's a requirement by state law that you have to publish any changes to the ordinance ten days before the meeting. And so I think they wanted that to be published and then have that, continue that discussion at their next meeting on November twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay. So some potential action then with,
Correct.
If proper notice is taken.
Correct.
Okay.
And lastly, I forgot, is that they officially appointed Laura, um, to be on the planning commission, moving her from the alternate to full-time.
We welcomed her last time.
I took your flowers.
Yes. You've made an impact long before it's official, so, thank you.
But now you're on the hook.
Okay, Pat, so that was all the seventh. Anything on the twenty-second or that stood out?
Um, the only thing that I think people have been talking about is closing the Capitol site at the old public work site. Um, doing that because of, um, not being able to, I think, uh, control access. And, and then trying to figure out if there should be some other temporary site. And I think it also has to do with costs. Again, I'm not a hundred percent, uh, preview, preview to that discussion, but I think those are the main issues.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so moving on, we've got a couple miscellaneous items tonight. Um, did we wanna get to those, I assume? So, uh, item A is Downtown West with thirteen and a half acres, and item B is the Downtown Parking Task Force.
And then I wanted to add, sorry, I don't know if we need to add this to the agenda or not, but I also wanted to update the council, the planning commission on the docs discussion. So, uh, for the Downtown West, um, we, there were two developers that came to the city council, uh, work session at their last meeting. Uh, the first one is DJR Architects, and they presented the concept plan that's on the overhead. And to give you some background, um, one of the things that the manager, city manager told me I needed to do before he left was find a developer for this site. So I've been working diligently trying to find developers. And, uh, Mark Colssus, also the planning consultant, has been working with me as well. And our whole goal was, was to find a larger developer that would be able to develop the entire thirteen and a half acre site versus someone who wanted to come in and just buy two acres from the city and another three acres here and having a piecemeal development. So we first looked at, uh, Ryan and Opus as larger developers that would be able to have the financial wherewithal to do the entire thing. Um, they weren't interested. Ryan said that they didn't have, see enough profit in it, um, which I think kind of funny. Um, and then we worked down the medium den, uh, medium developers who kind of focused on, uh, apartments since apartments probably was gonna be the, the heavier, the most heavily used part of this. And, uh, for a number of reasons, the developers weren't interested. Um, uh, I think we contacted, uh, six or seven developers, uh, which would be your medium classified, uh, developers. And then the next step was, I, I thought, well, why not contact architects who work with developers who may have connections that staff doesn't know? And so I contacted three, three architect firms, one of them DJR, because I know that they've done really good work in the past on multifamily housing. And within a day, they said, yeah, I'm interested. And so he went out on the site, walked it, uh, came up with a, uh, concept sketch plan, presented to staff. Um, it was very consistent with the downtown master plan that was adopted. And we said, yeah, let, if you find a developer, let's, we could talk more. So he found a developer, Thon Development and United Properties, uh, and then came in with, with that development team and presented this concept to the city council. City council was, uh, uh, had a lot of questions, was really encouraged by the, the project. And the next step would, uh, for, would be to develop a, a preliminary development agreement that would outline the timing that they would have to complete their market studies, to complete their financial studies, um, and refine their, their concept plans a little bit. So it's, um, that's gonna be at their next city council meeting. Um, part of that, and it's a, it's a four-month review period. Part of that four-month review period is, um, they, they, uh, do their diligence and provide their financials to the city. And our city or financial consultant would review it to make sure they do have the wherewithal to complete it and, um, and the financing and figure out if there's any gaps and how do you close those gaps.
It really worries me, the access to Route Five. It just, look at that, they've got two cuts right there. I can't imagine that the state would allow that.
It is something that we have to work on.
Absolutely.
Right.
You, you just, you can't get out of Dairy Queen at five o'clock. By the time you get out, you've finished your ice cream cone.
We, we definitely have to have had more controlled intersection there, experienced that myself this evening. Love the, back to grocery stores there.
Fabulous.
Can we support another four hundred residential units? And is our goal for the CBD to be mostly residential versus business?
Was it, this, this isn't exclusively residential, right? Is, is it, it's all mixed use with commercial on the ground floor for all the main, the main buildings?
So one of the re- really re- unique, uh, concepts that DJR has done in the past is to create multifamily, uh, developments. The one is on Excelsior and, and France Avenue, it's about two miles from my house. And they created this, uh, apartment buildings in the second, third, fourth floor, and then townhouses on the first floor. But they designed the townhouses with thirteen, uh, uh, height floors between the floors and the ceiling. And then they also have it so it's walked out, so that they can easily convert those to commercial when that commercial is a higher best use than a townhouse. It's a very interesting concept, because a lot of times you, uh, see apartment buildings, um, developed and the ground floor is vacant for years because there's no market for it. But the city wants to have some type of activity on the ground floor. So this concept of having a townhouse on the ground floor, but designed so it could be a retail over time, is an interesting concept.
I haven't seen it, it sounds kinda cool.
Or could, did he also mention that there's a, it might not be happening quite here yet, but there is a trend in the market where there's, it's actually a combination where people are, are, you know, I'm gonna say like a little pottery shop or something, for example, but you're, you're living, you know, kind of artistic spaces where people are living in that space, um, as a, as a, you know, a strong return to retail again, which everybody's left. But for these kind of unique artists that are selling things, those type of spaces would be, they'll, you could use it for that also.
From a financial standpoint, that's hard to make work when you're talking about new construction costs. You can see that pretty often in some, um, industrial areas that are kind of turning over where it's kind of a,
Cheap rent?
Yeah, I mean, that, that works. This is not a cheap project, this is, this is gonna be tricky. Um, but, Pat, to your point, I mean, retail, city, so many cities have said you need retail down below, and it's, and it's, and there's not retailers that wanna be there. Because part of it's parking, part of it's because access, um.
The developer assumes that risk though, don't they? If they're in this mixed retail thing, you would know this better than I would, but I'm just, I'm just guessing. The ri-, where would the, financial risk would lie with the developer and the architect, right?
Oh, yeah, well, the developer.
Right, the, the developer. So from a risk perspective, right, is that, to your point, is this something we need to worry about?
Well, it sounds like they've, they've thought through that, which is fantastic, so.
You're right, from a risk perspective, it's not really the city's, um, concern, it's more the developer. But it's one of those things where the city doesn't want vacant storefronts and, or a grocery store that doesn't work. So we do wanna make sure that they do have some market studies, uh, conducted, and they're, they're good. Um, but you're right, the city doesn't have financial risk for those things that wouldn't work out.
It's just an amenity that's brought to the city though, if we can fill those spaces.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and the tax base or whatever else that we can get out of it. But as far as parking goes, if you're gonna end up with retail in there eventually, do they plan any underground parking for all these units also?
Right, they'd be, all the units would have underground parking for the apartments.
That's where I'm going next. So would this be, would it be considered a downtown and then fall into all the parking stuff we talk about all the time too? Is there accommodation? Would there be, my point is, if they decide to build, build access parking spots and a new, and then a new business comes into Downtown East, would that factor for the whole entire downtown? Or would the, I, I'm trying to, hopefully someone understands what I'm saying, or how I'm saying.
Would it be subject to our parking ordinance?
Right, and would it bleed into,
With those numbers going into that.
Right, would it bleed into Downtown East?
I think it's less about the numbers, more about the practicality.
Right.
Right, like, you know, whether, whether the numbers are shared among, you know, East Downtown and, and West Downtown. You know, is, are, are people gonna park in the east to get to, you know, some units over here on the front?
I, I totally agree with that, Jeff. And the reason I asked the question is, remember, she, planning meetings ago, we started calling Downtown across Five into that residential neighborhood, right? So, y- you know, so it, it's that same discussion that we had south of Five. Are we now taking that discussion and moving it west? Right, practicality, you know, practicality on the south means we're going back to that other conversation we had regarding, you know, how do we cross Five? Do we go under it, you know, all those types of things? Are we still doing the same, the same thing, but moving it west?
Well, this is part of the central business district.
Yes.
So, yeah, and effectively, it's gonna be the same as any other business within Downtown. Exposure to parking as far as the zoning goes.
I'm anxious to see what the new parking committee comes up with, cause it's just a mess. I'm so disappointed we're keeping this little one-way street here. I'm not sure when that got passed, but I missed it. It's just a mess.
Can this be rezoned?
It will have to be rezoned.
Good. Cause it's only gonna hurt parking more because of ratios.
Mm-hmm.
So a little background, um, I used to work with Keith Olsted, this developer. Um, I know him well, and I, I used to work at United Properties. So they are a fantastic developer and, um, they know what they're doing.
They are. I've had a good, also had a really good experience with them.
Keith actually lives in Victoria. The main point of contact that Pat works with. Shouldn't influence, but he, he wants to see Victoria the way we want it to. Well, I would hope.
So parking is probably a good segway into the next item. We've had two, uh, parking task force meetings. And, um, park, downtown parking is a struggle. Um, and you can see it, listen to it at the parking task force meetings. Um, cause on one hand, you want a pedestrian-friendly downtown, which means the parking is limited, and you have more storefronts, and you may have to walk a little bit. Um, but you also wanna make sure you do have parking available for the guests. And it's the balance that we're trying to create. Um, the, Hoyson and Kogler is our consultant, and he showed us, you know, a suburban mall that has, uh, individual buildings, look, kinda like Chan has, and which parking, with parking around each one of those buildings. And people drive to that building, and they go to that building, and they major, drive to another building, and they go to that building and do their shopping like that way. Um, I don't think that that's what the vision of the downtown is. So, but it's trying to find that balance between providing enough parking, but also providing a, a quaint, cute downtown. That's what we're struggling with. Mm-hmm. Um, and then the last one is docs. So we've, um, talked amongst staff about the docs. And, um, there's a, and with some residents who live on Lake Minnetaka. And the residents of Lake Minnetaka would rather have the, the Lake Conservation District regulate docs as opposed to the city. So one of the things we wanna make sure though is that all of them understand. So one of the things we want to make sure though is that all of them understand that if they do that, they're back in the same scenario that started this whole thing in the first place. And that is a property owner could have additional docks and rent it out to somebody who doesn't live on that dock. Because the, the Lake Minnetaka Conservation District doesn't regulate who uses those docks. It's just a number based on the, your lot width. So what we're going to plan on doing is we're going to mail every, uh, send out a letter to everybody who lives on Lake Minnetaka and have a public, uh, open house uh, right before your next planning commission meeting in December, just for staff timing. And then have that discussion with them, just make sure that they all understand what this would mean. Um, before we bring it back to the planning commission and we probably going to have to continue it from your December meeting to your January meeting. So I just want to give you a heads up on that of, that's what we're planning on doing.
Pat, do we, um, do you have a high level of confidence that the LMCD doesn't, doesn't restrict watercraft to, um, being licensed to the, or in the, in the title of the property owner? For some reason, I thought I, I found it in there.
I think they do. I think in their sheet they say, they, they say it does, but then the cities have, the individual cities have pref- have kind of precedence over Lake Minnetaka. Because it varies city to city, what you can and can't do. Or, yeah, with how many, how many boats you could have at a, a, you know, at a, at one dock, slipper, a dock.
Cities have the option to be more prescriptive if they, if they choose to do so, is what the LMCD, I, I thought their position was.
That's open for debate. I think, um, two attorneys will argue either way.
Okay.
Um, and I, I'm pretty confident that they have, they have some restrictions, but if you have a large enough property, you are able to have docks that do not, the owners do not use.
Yeah, I remember, I remember, well, I, I do remember seeing language that if it's based on your property width, so you could have multiple docks. Um, if you're, if the, your lakeshore was wide enough, but for some reason I thought that it was still restricted to, um, ownership, you know, the title being in, uh, in the name of the, the landowner. So I guess we, we got to get some clarity on that because the, one of the things that started this was, um, I think more focused on, it was, maybe it was less about multiple docks, but more about a condition where there's multiple docks with shared access and, you know, leasing, renting, some common use, um, whereas it would seem that generally would seem less of, less offensive if multiple docks were allowed, but it was, um, still required to be, but, you know, the, the property owner.
There was a case just like this in Arnold recently where an elderly lady was supplemental.
She's been, cut her off.
She rented the property and along came the dock. Well, Arnold, as an ordinance, only the owners of the property can have boats moored at these docks. But the LMCD said, we don't care whose boat's there. Doesn't matter. As long as they have legal access to the property, they can have a boat at that dock if the dock's allowed per property.
Another example of why I, I, confirms my, my thinking is that the LMCD approved that dock for Unhox Point, even though it wasn't going to be used for that property owner, it was going to have an easement on there. So again, I don't think they're concerned with who owns the docks. It's just the number of docks per lot on, based on lot width.
Well, we could let them have the docks and we could just have a zoning ordinance that doesn't allow a, an easement through the property. A, a public trail through the property. Only, could only be used by the private property owner.
We could, we could take a look at that.
Yeah, we have the enforcement issue though, right?
Well, there's always that. There is with Lins and Hawks and everything. That was something we brought up at another meeting.
Right.
It's, it's always the stickler.
Yeah.
Go back to parking. What's the next action step on that task, task force? When will we see something that has some substance to it?
They, they have their final meeting on December twelfth, I believe. And hopefully they come to a, uh, some type of recommendation that we can forward to the, the city council.
Was there any talk with the planning council I wanted to get back to a little bit too? Was there talk about up and going underground and instead of flat lottying and everything or how they're going to dice up the flat lots?
Yeah, so, um, one of the things they talked about was just the, the cost of construction of a, a parking deck. Um, the consultant used a parking deck of two hundred, um, parking stalls and the ballpark figure for that is six million dollars just to construct it and then there's operation, maintenance over time. Um, one of the things that is, has been discussed and I think a, a number of times and it's kind of like the elephant in the room is Mr. Gannon's property and building a parking deck there. So today I kind of instructed our, uh, consultant to look at what it would be, how much parking could you get on that Gannon's property if you removed his building and how much would that deck cost? Because it's more than, it's not as many as two hundred spaces. So I think he may be using a larger deck. But I mean, to me, that, that is the main question that everybody keeps gravitating towards.
But the parking people are, parking is horrible today. At least when a restaurant opens up.
We went to Burrows on Sunday. My younger family dragged me there for lunch. I was telling Pat this, that, um, my son-in-law could hardly get into the car afterwards because the car had parked next to us. Now, he's your size. He's not a large man. And our car and the car next to us were in be- in their space, the way they should have been, right between their lines. But we looked around the parking lot. A lot of people were going to have trouble getting in and out of their cars since they changed the, the size of those places. And then it reminded me of when I shop at Kowalski's, they have tiny places too. And this had larger places because they had to accommodate supermarket parkers. I guess Excelsior doesn't have that much.
Walk it back.
It starts with the building, the base starts with the building. The city builds the ordinance from there. I think it's going to be, but they can have it as small as the, the building code allows.
I know.
You know, which is, it gets tight. The people are at the center, it's.
I, at the end of course, out here, we don't drive small cars. That's the other thing. Just an observation.
So in case you're curious, it used to have nine-foot wide parking stalls at the, the grocery store here and then they reduced it to eight and a half.
Yep.
And Mary Jo is correct because that's exactly what they have in Kowalski's is eight and a half. And typically you allow a, a larger width for grocery stores because of the, uh, carts coming in and out and getting your groceries in. And, um, I wasn't the planner at the Kowalski's, so. Oh, it got to eight and a half.
Can I ask, I'm so sorry to go back. Um, I'm going to go back to downtown west for just a nanosecond if that's okay. Um, you mentioned that they are, I think you said this, I'm just, I'd like confirmation that they are in the financial analysis stage. Is that correct?
They're, they're asking the city council to start that. And, and part of it is that they have to put up an escrow to pay our legal costs and our financial costs to review their financial analysis over that next four-month period.
So with that said, um, I would like to encourage affordable housing to be a part of that project and I would assume that, that would be an aspect of the financial review. That's, that's definitely a big part of the numbers and, um, I need to look over the twenty forty comp plan to see the priority of, of affordable housing, but, um, just to kind of back this, I'm not coming out of left field, but um, I think that should be a priority. Um, it's not something that's really part of our city today as much as I think it should be.
Is the affordable har- housing portion, is some of that pressed upon us by the Met Council also by the number of units we're installing within the city?
Yes. They, they give us some guidance of the number of units that we need to provide.
Affordable housing is based really on the median household income of the area and the value of the housing. It's not based on low income. That's what everybody thinks that someone making fifty thousands can be able to afford. It's based on, I believe, the median value of the homes in the area and the wages earned at a sixty percent rate or forty percent. So it's formulated like that. So it's still.
So it's not as effective as one would hope.
It's not what you call section three housing. That's what everyone thinks when they hear affordable housing. Affordable housing does not mean that. Low-income housing. It's just based on a percentage of the value of the property around and the wage people make in town.
Maybe a young person could afford it for the most, that's, that's.
But it does help.
Yes.
I mean, it really is housing for, so my wife is an affordable housing developer, just to let you know. And, uh, so I hear us all the time, but it is housing for the cops and teachers.
Absolutely.
We're going to need it with the high school.
Well, and I think if in fact, United Properties is a developer that's selected on this, they have a priority for, for the housing. That is one of their initiatives. And so I think what a better company to, to really have them do just that. I don't.
Peter's nice job.
Because it's a, it's a, it's a, um, ethic or it's a core belief of theirs.
So what's, with regard to this topic, what, what's the next step? So there's financial analysis. Um, it, it sounds like this was more informational for us tonight, but will there be a, a next step in which some input, uh, we can offer in a more meaningful way and?
That's a great question. Thanks. Um, so I, I just wanted to give the planning commission a heads up that this is being discussed so that you're not cut off guard. Um, but as also part of that four-month process, um, they'll probably come back with, and meet with the planning commission to kind of go through these concepts and talk about affordable housing and things like that.
Sketch, sketch plot, concept plot, kind of stage?
Elevations.
Yeah.
Uh, not sure about elevations, but maybe, but it's more about the uses and parking, things like that.
And we've seen, we've seen a wide variety of, of sketch, sketch plans coming before us. Some are, have more information. Because it's, it's, it's an optional step in the process anyways, right? And so some have come with a lot more detail and a lot more, um, range of exhibits to help us understand where they're heading. Others have come with just a simple plan just to get feedback, right?
But we won't see it until, for, for four months, right? Until after the financial analysis is done?
I'd say within three, four months you'll should be seeing it.
But elevations would come before final approval?
At, yes. At some point, elevations would come. The, I think, um, it's kind of like a upside-down pyramid. You start in general and you come down to the specifics, um, because it's just the cost of doing the, the elevations. Um, so they want to make sure that we're talking about up here and you're com- comfortable with the, the uses and the financing and what, if there's any financial gaps. And then be, come down closer to the details and then you do the, um, elevations at that time.
Good.
Jeff, I'd like to say one thing. You questioned at our last meeting whether just having one meeting a month would result in longer meetings. Very prophetic.
Are you, are you suggesting that we, that we, we make a motion? Is a, well, first of all, is there any other miscellaneous items?
Nope.
All right. Mary Jo, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Enjoy your evenings.